Welcome to this evening's planning board meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Nat, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We're continuing the two sets of June minutes, July 8th and August 8th. Any questions, comments, changes?
Make a motion to continue those minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor continuing, please say aye. Okay. That's every, all the regular folks here. July 8th. No, July 8th.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue those.
No, we got those, I think. We have those.
Make a motion to approve July 8th and August 8th, 2019.
Is there a motion? All those, that was Fritz seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, I'm passing this to Nat and John for signature and then back to Catherine. We have a couple of approval not required. I have to report to everybody on the board that John and Nat and I had the first meeting with the help of staff last week to handle over noon hour and I think that went pretty well, so we have fewer of these tonight than we ordinarily would. First, to continue, number 8362, Town of Nantucket, 111 Washington Street. Is there a motion to continue?
Make that motion.
John. Nat seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
John D., this is 8384. John D. Gilmarten III is trustee of 11 New Mill Street. These approval not required are not up for public hearings, so we don't entertain comments from the audience, but I'd invite Holly, if you have anything you want to tell us about this one.
Yes, I asked the surveyor to provide more documentation for burden of proof besides just the 1955 real estate valuation list, which obviously takes into consideration the year previously. I have a copy of our data sheet from the National Historic Listing, which includes, apologize, I just had it for a second here. New Mill, right here, the garage and dwelling from the late 1800s as a contributing. So that's there, but I also have aerials that have been provided as well, in addition to what was previously provided.
So one of the ways you can qualify for approval not required is if it was preexisting to the subdivision act, right?
1955, correct.
So that's what the assertion is here. Are there, with that evidence, the file's complete, right? And your recommendation stands?
Correct.
Okay. Is there discussion or questions? Is there a motion?
With that, I'll make a motion to approve 8384, 11 New Mill.
John moved. Nat seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one is approved. We have the first secondary dwelling. John Gilmarten III is trustee of 13 New Mill Street and there's a request to withdraw that application. Is there a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
John moved. Nat seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Robert Allen Elizabeth Rothbard, 3 Berks Farm Road. Staff recommends approval. Is there any comment or question about that?
I'm talking about West Chestnut Street. Make a motion to approve.
Nat moves to approve.
I'll second.
John seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Christopher Emery, 7 West Way. Staff recommends approval with revised site plan. Is there anything about the site plan you want to tell us, Holly?
We just need additional information, the minimum 10-foot separation between the proposed dwellings.
So the motion would be to approve it, subject to staff reviewing and accepting?
With revised site plan.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
John moves.
Second.
Nat seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dan O'Keefe, 3 Burnt Swamp Lane. Questions on that? Okay. Staff recommends approval. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
John moves and Nat seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mark P. and Mary Louise Seidner, 15 Wood Hollow Road. Again, staff recommends approval. Questions, anybody?
Holly, they already got, what are we doing here?
They're replacing.
They already have a house on it.
Yep, that's what I asked them as well.
But they've torn it down, right?
They've torn it down and they're replacing.
Oh. You gotta take a, you gotta get an approval for existing, to set out a building, right?
Correct. Your approval's only good for two years.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Nat moves. John seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Robin Marie Kuhn, 12 Dobbs Way. This is another one, Holly, you recommended getting a revised site plan?
Yes.
Any questions on that?
They have an existing building, right? They're just converting it to a second one?
Correct. Or correct. A portion of it, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Nat moves.
With staff recommendation on the site plan.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mark Lester Swindell and Melanie Brundell, 21 Kendrick Street. Holly, you recommend approval. Any questions on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Nat moves.
I'll second.
John seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the next two are for tertiary dwellings, but we're gonna hold that, okay. We're gonna hold that till we get to the public hearing, but Nat will recuse at that point. Okay. Azia Athletic Club, this was one that had to do with whether we're ready to release the escrow and we're still waiting, Holly, is that right?
Yes, we have not received any additional information at this time.
So you want to continue this until September?
Yes.
Or the next regular in-house meeting? Know what I'm talking about?
Let's give them till September.
Yes.
You want to do that? Okay. I'll make a motion to continue to the next regular planning board meeting. Is it the 9th?
Yes.
I'll second that.
John seconds. Nat moves. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're holding the secondary dwelling on Somerset Road till we get to public hearings. Rupert's Way, this is another one having to do with lot, the Farm J lot release and you want to tell us anything about this, Holly? It's also probably be a good idea to just explain a little so everybody's clear.
Okay, this was a subdivision that the board had originally approved. They had to come back and have their plans endorsed by the board, that's why they're in front of you. So they're here to do that. They have concurrence from your consultant engineer, Mr. Pesci, which is included in your packet right here. And they're also requesting the lot, release of two different lots, which is allowed within the approval of the, from the covenant. And they've provided the HOA documents, which are also included in your packet.
So everything's in order here and our motion would be to endorse the plans and...
I just have one question.
Yes, please, Kimball.
If I, and I could be wrong, but I thought at one point this subdivision was required to have accessible turnaround at the end of it for fire and emergency vehicles. In other words, so that those vehicles could turn around?
I'm not sure. Holly, does that ring any bells or...
I...
Oh, okay. Yes, hi.
Good evening, Dan Malloy, sites and engineering. We prepared the plans. Holly, can you flip down maybe one more?
Yep.
Right there. So right on the end where the hand is, where the mouse cursor panning is, that's the turnaround that was requested, both by Ed Pesci and I believe the Fire Department.
Okay.
Okay, great. I just wanted to check and make sure that was included.
So the motion would be to endorse the plans that submitted and release those two lots, 16 and 17, and the requisite legal documents also provided, right?
With the staff recommendations.
With the staff recommendations. John?
I'll make that motion.
Fritz, would you second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Nat, you're recused?
Yeah.
Okay. Number 021946 Surfside LLC, request for extension. This is a request for a six-month extension. I believe there was an error on the original documents that should have read January of 2019. Is, am I correct? Holly, that's been corrected already, probably. And I understand from, I think this was Ms. Elter's client, that they had trouble lining up the personnel to move ahead with it and needed another six months.
That's what they're asking for, yes.
Ms. Elter, did you want to say, do you want to say anything to us, Ms. Elter? Do you want us to say anything? We're not asking just if you're standing, I didn't know if you wanted to speak.
No.
Okay. You're happy. Okay, Nat is happy too. What are you going to say there?
Well, no, this has been, this property's had a lot of change, so we should give them the opportunity to finish whatever's gonna happen.
So the six months would run from today and that would run until January, right, Holly?
Yes, and this is the first extension. Just want to note that.
Okay. And that's the first extension.
Motion to approve the six-month extension.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First public hearing is number 4019 Roberts Collection, 4 Chestnut Street, 11 India Street, 29 and 31 Center Street. And we've had two rounds of discussion about this previously. I believe that Fritz is going to recuse because he missed the second of these hearings, so I'm going to activate. Whose turn is it? Ladera, you look interested. I think Steve had the last round, so why don't you step in next? Is that okay? Okay. I feel like a quiz show host or something here sometimes. Yes.
I give you two and I was activated on the last.
Oh, okay. Thank you, then you're, yes, that's right.
He was our, yeah.
So, and you were there also to hear the prior two rounds?
Yes.
Okay, so the two of you are activated. Thank you. Ms. Elter, hello.
Yes, I do want to speak on this one. Thank you. Sarah Elter for the applicant. And I understand we have two alternates activated.
Right.
At the last meeting, the board requested that we put together a draft decision, which we did and have submitted. The applicants have met with various town boards and officials, including the DPW, to ensure that the trees are preserved and taken care of, and also with David Gray to make sure that all the sewer issues are addressed. And John Bracken is here and can address those questions in more detail if you'd like. I just want to remind the board that although this seems like such a big project, it really is a very small project and that we have four existing buildings in the heart of town. The proposal doesn't really change three out of four of the buildings. The one building that's being renovated has a modest increase in footprint. The three existing retail stores are being eliminated. An additional 24 indoor rest, only 24 indoor restaurant seats are being added. And then the patio seating, which I think is probably the most, I guess if there's something controversial about this, it would be the patio seating. But the patio seating is surrounded on three sides by structures, by the gatehouse on the, I guess you'd say that's the east, by the meeting house on the south, and by Manor House on the, on the west. And then, of course, Center Street. The... I know many neighbors are concerned about noise. I just want to point out that there is an existing, there have been two existing restaurants in this building for a very long time. We also have, in the direct immediate vicinity, the boarding house, proprietors, company of the Cauldron, right in the same, right in the same block. So it's in a, it's certainly an appropriate place for this use. This is a, I think, a fairly modest expansion of the existing uses. I don't know, John, did you want to address any of the engineering?
I think the only new engineering information...
Just introduce yourself, Mr. Bracken.
I'm sorry, Don Bracken, Bracken Engineering. The only new information that I can share is on the sewer connection. We did a lot of investigation on the utilities going to the building and, as we suspected, they go from one building to another and everything is very old. As Sarah said, we did meet David Gray out there. And right now, the plan is to connect to an existing sewer line that's approximately in this area. Right now, it goes out to India Street through the existing building. We've had problems with that sewer line in the past. So we plan on coming out to Chestnut Street, installing a grease trap as suggested by Mr. Gray for the restaurant flow. He recollects a new, a newer pipe being in that area that we're gonna have to find and locate.
When they did the 4 Chestnut project, right?
No, actually, no. It was here, I think, for the front building. This sewer actually comes out the side into Chestnut Street in that direction. I am, I have been talking to contractors that built this to try to find Jeff Daya from Toscana, talked to him today. He doesn't, he doesn't recall, but Scotty Anderson may recall what they found in this area. So there is, there's definitely viable solution to the sewer.
Well, I'm just gonna offer my own thought. I don't know what others would say, but I don't feel in a position to rely on your comments without Mr. Gray being here and letting us inquire of him directly, because what we currently have in the record are pretty substantial concerns. Do you have anything else in writing or any more documentation that would give us an update if you've had further discussions?
I think the comments that he sent in the, in the email that I saw the other day does address our meeting. He was going to send me the, the cable video of that line so we could find where that pipe comes in, so we could find it. We are going to have to submit an official sewer permit plan and application once we finalize the flow, which is dependent on number of seats in the restaurant, and provide them those details at that point. But I, I would think it's more of a technicality to tie in, but obviously...
Well, I just wanted to add, just as a factual banner, if there's any other documentation that we don't have, because your conversation could have been this morning, I just don't know how that dovetailed with what his comments were.
I think he does mention in his comments that we met out there. And he's adamant about us not tying into India Street, not using the existing sewer line, which, which we will not, and that could be a condition.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
To the board, does anyone have questions before we open the public hearing?
I just have one small one, well, two, okay, two. So my first, oh, now I've forgotten.
We'll come back, you'll have a chance. Okay?
Sorry about that, yeah.
Okay.
No, I remember.
Okay.
So I'm a little confused. In one of the applications, it said that there were going to, there are currently three retail stores in the Center Street Bistro building, and that they were going to go to zero commercial shops. And then in another one, I was reading that there was one commercial shop, and I wasn't quite sure which building that was in, but so I'm a little confused as to what's happening with those.
There's an, there's a chart, both in the application and in the draft decision, that shows the existing and proposed uses. There is a, an existing use that would be continued in Manor, in the basement of Manor House.
So there's, there's no effort to replace the three commercial spaces that are going to be lost?
Right. There's currently, I mean, a total of four commercial spaces on the property, one in the basement of Manor House and, and three in the meeting house building.
My concern was mainly with those three commercial...
And those three...
That are really, you know, those are small spaces for young entre, you know, local entrepreneurial people to rent, and the loss of those is somewhat, in my view, somewhat significant, given the prohibitive cost for retail space in the downtown area for, you know, young local entrepreneurs, so...
Yeah, unfortunately, the zoning bylaw doesn't have a mechanism for protecting the availability or nonavailability of, of retail or, or any other sort of space, for that matter.
Thanks, Kimball. Could I ask one of you, Ms. Elter and also Ms. Back, because I wondered, has Mr. Bracken referenced that DPW had looked at this? I wonder, has the tree warden reviewed the tree situation? And do we have any documentation from DPW that would allow us to see expressly what they said?
Actually, the architects were dealing with the tree issue, but I think there is someone here from the DPW that may be able to answer that question? Oh, there you are.
There you are.
Hi there. I'm Stephen Arseneau with Public Works Department, one of the deputy directors.
Thank you.
We're working with the gentleman right now to see what trees, to make sure we understand which trees are there, which trees are gonna be removed and coordinated in our efforts with them. Dave Shampoo, our tree warden, is gonna be assessing the situation tomorrow. We should have an answer to that.
But we don't have anything at this point yet.
Not right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, if everybody's ready, I'd invite members of the public who'd like to speak on this matter to come forward and give your name. We need you to be at one of the mics so that, this is being broadcast and videotaped so others could hear. Mr. Yankov, hello. Ms. Masters, hello.
Hi, this, my name is Keith Yankow with Cielo Masters, a neighbor. There are six points that I made to the proposed decision. One was that there be 60 exterior seats.
Good catch.
The second was, and usually words prevail over numbers, but I'd want it the other way on this one. Number two was that the, there should be no socializing, comma, seating or tables on the south side of the meeting house. Number three is in paragraph nine on page 10 of the proposed draft, that it would read "No bar, no amplified sound, music, or exterior television shall be permitted within the outdoor restaurant." So there'd be no bar. Number four, the fourth item, is the number, paragraph 11, that dinner service on the outside bar stop at 9:00 PM, so that by 10:00, everybody's either inside or gone from social, you know, making restaurant noises. Number five would be, again, there, there'll be no outdoor music, period. And number six would be that modification to this management plan cannot be made without coming back to the board when it involves the outside seating numbers, music hours, TV, bar, or noise restrictions. You want to say anything?
Yes. Thank you. I'm Cielo Masters, and one of the biggest concern for me is the music outside, because we had the ventuno, they play very, very loud music and amplified music on outside, and I seen in the beginning it was supposed to be like that, then now it's completely out here and you can hear from my room, my room can even sometimes shaking a little bit. And it's just, it's, if they just pass to have a little music outside, I know after time that can get out here and it's very hard to control with the owners of the restaurant and it's not there, then the manager or the employees start take over, then, yeah, so...
Thank you. Thank you, we're always glad to see you. You've done a great job presenting to us.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Ms. Rayport.
Hi, I'm Hillary Rayport. I'm chair of the Nantucket Historical Commission. I'm speaking as a resident of the town. My commission has not had a chance to deliberate about this, but I did walk down to the area. Our commission's purpose is to protect the historical assets of Nantucket and to advise the select board on the protection of these assets. And I'll just make a couple of points that I emailed to you earlier. The sewer department's concern is really the standout, and we would echo your caution and thank you for your caution. If there's any kind of break in the sewer or overwhelming of the sewer that, that causes major construction, it does propose not just a nuisance, but a threat to foundations and the buildings, so that's a real concern. The second is, is the two large elm trees. So these are prime examples of the elms that were planted. They're probably over 100 years old. Maybe Emily can tell us how old those elm trees are. One of them on the corner of India has been severely damaged. The second elm, which is right in front of the meeting house, is in quite good condition. It has a very wide root zone. This is not shown accurately in the plans. So the sidewalk is 11 feet across. It's narrowed to about four feet where that elm tree is. So I think that the applicant should add that to the plan because it's not going to be altered or it shouldn't be altered. And I would also concur with the planning board that it's important to get a statement in writing from not just the DPW, but the tree warden about how to manage this tree so that it's protected. A second tree issue, open space in town is very important to the context of our town. It's getting less and less open space in the historic core, and tree canopy in the historic core is important from a historical perspective. There is a tree, it's not an old tree, but it is a mature tree. It's a Japanese maple, it's very attractive. If there's any opportunity for the applicant to preserve this specimen, I think it would be a benefit to the neighborhood. Another thing I noticed is the alley from Chestnut Street, which is going to be the main access point for supplying the restaurant. I don't, where is the restaurant, the Center Street Bistro, currently supplied from? Is it supplied from India Street now?
Holly, do you know that?
I don't know, I don't know.
It's supplied from Center Street. So this is gonna change. It is supplied from Chestnut. That's, okay, so that is staying the same. So this alley is attractively landscaped. I actually emailed, Holly, I emailed you a photo of the alley. And I think these little alleys that are so beautifully maintained in our town are part of the charm of the town that we want to preserve. And currently, this alley has beautiful flagstones and it looks like something in a residential area. It doesn't look like an industrial loading zone area. So I know you're going to be seeing a landscape plan, and I just wanted to, to call that out as an issue that would be of concern to the historic, historical commission, I would think, if we have a chance to deliberate about this. The public curbing and the brick, I wondered if there was an opportunity to document what's there, because when you bring a lot of construction materials and heavy materials into an area, curbing can get damaged. It's part of the historic fabric of the town and I think should be noted in the existing conditions about what's there, so that there's not damage to this material. And the last thing that I wanted to say is that these two buildings, 11 India and 31 Center Street, they're buildings from the 1840s, they're contributing buildings, and they actually have a lot of historic material inside them. So I know this would be a voluntary action on the part of the, of the developer, but if there would be any possibility of opening to feedback from someone like the Nantucket Preservation Trust to look at the, the beautiful features inside these homes, the, there are historic 1840s banisters, there's panel doors, there are some original interior shutters, and these are the types of things that although the Town of Nantucket doesn't own them and can't control them, they're part of our history. And if there would be any spirit on the part of the applicant to think about... to think about voluntarily preserving this, that I think our commission and other commissions would look very favorably on that. And the last thing I just wanted to say from a historical perspective is that it's, the Historical Commission understands that buildings and their uses in the town needs to evolve. And this can evolve in a, in a good direction. And we hope that it can become a better place and contribute even more to the town of Nantucket. And I hope some of our considerations could be noted by the board.
Thank you. Anybody have questions before she sits down? Okay, thank you. Ms. Malden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Emily Malden for the Nantucket Land Council. I just briefly wanted to reiterate the request for a review and report from the town tree warden, Dave Shampoo. I think the town code might actually require sign off from the tree warden for potential impacts to town trees. And then also just to remind the planning board, I think it was when the gatehouse was last renovated, there were some modifications that had to be made based on review of potential impacts to the linden tree that's on Chestnut Street. So given the foundation work with the meeting house, I think it would just be in everyone's best interest to get that sign off before proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who'd like to speak? Ms. Elter.
I just wanted to address a couple of comments that were made. First of all, the tree warden's been out on medical leave. So I would propose that if you wanted, you could put, that we would meet with him, and that would be a precondition to getting a building permit, a satisfactory report from him through staff. I also wanted to mention the public sidewalks, particularly the sidewalk going Center Street. We're not proposing any changes to the public sidewalks surrounding the property. All of our changes are interior. The sewer, when we're done, will be better and safer than it is today. We're going to be upgrading, depending upon what we find. This is a problem all throughout town. Replacing clay pipes and finding old lines that run through other buildings. When we're done, it will be a better and safer situation. We won't have pipes running through buildings to get to other buildings. And we'll have upgraded and new pipes. And we'll put it wherever David Gray tells us to put the pipes. Whatever works best is what we'll do.
Thank you.
The alley is not changing at all. There are no changes proposed. That's where deliveries currently come into both gatehouse and the meeting house, and no changes are proposed there. There are no changes proposed in the loading, that loading facility is what exists today and will continue. Sure.
Yes.
Do you mean the little brick thing?
I mean the little brick thing. That's what I mean. The brick area on Chestnut Street. And then I guess the only other comment I have is on Mr. Yankow's comments. Good catch on the typo, that was inadvertent, obviously. I just don't really understand what socializing means. I mean, this is an area of the property that's currently used. We're not proposing seating, tables, public, anything back there. But it is an area where people will be coming for loading and offloading purposes. So if that, I don't know if that amounts to socializing. I just have a problem with the use of the word "socializing."
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Quick question. And I think Nat brought it up last time, and so I'm still a little confused because on the gatehouse, where the loading zone is, not loading zone, the delivery path, there appears to be a stairwell, an exterior stairwell that goes down and comes up. And I'm just wondering, how's that being navigated? Are people going with a ramp down and a ramp up? Is there a panel on the side of the building that'll fold down that people can walk over?
Are you all hearing that? You want to comment?
It goes in by hand truck, and there's a ramp up and down, and you end up.
Okay, so they go down and then they, okay.
The key that all this delivery is. The truck is lucky they can even park. Okay? So they get really excited when they can park in a good spot. So when they get to go in there, it's a gift for them. But otherwise, you know, they have to walk on the sidewalk around from somewhere else. So I mean, this is the optimum spot. But it doesn't mean that every single, you know, banana or box or something goes this way. It's just, this is the, the good, the good spot that was set up in 2007 when the four Chestnut projects.
The stairwell is already there.
Right.
Right, okay. I thought it was.
It's a little area back there, you can walk with a dolly.
I'm not going to suggest, I'm going to suggest we not yet close the public hearing because we've been known to do that too quickly and still have questions.
I have no intention to make a motion.
Okay. So, Mr. Stanford, did you want to speak?
Terry Sanford for Blue Flag Development, the applicant. I just wanted to, again, add context to the conversation we've been having over the last couple of months. But the purpose of all this is for us to put back in order a building that's really not been very well looked after for a long time. And in so doing, make right a number of things that need to be made right. And that includes drainage, sewer, special permits. All of these things we're trying to put back in place. ADA access, ADA actual rooms. So as a broader context, you know, again, I think we're happy to abide by any, any findings or any, any requirements that the board gives us. I think things like the sewer, again, the town's now got in place a good rigorous approval process for that. So, again, happy to have the additional oversight. But, you know, we're, we're, we're working directly with David to make sure that the sewer lines are tied into the, the right lines. We'll make improvements to the lines that need improvement to them. Install grease traps as necessary, all this stuff. And, and that's, that's, that's part of the process even beyond the, the planning board process here. And then the other thing I just want to say is that the, what we're, we're doing in terms of the change in use is we're changing three retail spaces to an expanded restaurant use. And we think that's a more efficient use of the space. And it allows us to, to do all these things that we're proposing to do, to improve the building, to improve the sewer lines, to improve the drainage, protect these trees. So ask the board, as it, as it relates to implementing operational constraints on the restaurant or on the hotel, please consider that, that sort of innocent until proven guilty stuff. We're competing with other existing businesses in town that don't have these constraints. And so we really like to go into this with, without, you know, our hands sort of tied and work through these things to figure out how, how best to make this all work. From a, from a neighbor standpoint, again, I don't think anybody has a bigger incentive than we do with 60 guest rooms onsite in direct proximity to all this other stuff, to making sure that this thing is well-run. It's quiet when it's meant to be quiet, and it's clean where it's meant to be clean.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we probably want some discussion broadly among the board, and then we may want to look at the documents you provided. We appreciate the detail of the various conditions and plans and everything like that. Nat, do you want to go first?
Sure. Sarah, are you here to answer a few questions? Okay, so when you met with DPW and David, you talk about the loading zone we discussed in front of the building that isn't there but is used as one all the time? And any improvements there that maybe like go to traffic safety or? That didn't come up?
Yeah.
Okay. What about the, what about the one-way concept, at least for the winter, for a test run to make India to Huzi one direction, which it should have been 50 years ago? But I thought we'd use that, this is an opportunity.
I think our thought was to not make it part of this process, but to have a discussion with the selectmen when, you know, office, when we go to.
In some manner, as far as the construction of this, it would help and simultaneously test it at the same time.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Because it's insane that that's two-way for that little section. Now that Rod goes in a circle.
I wouldn't want to make it part of this process only because you know what happens.
I know.
You think it makes total sense, and then you suggest it, and you find out.
Yep, I think we should add a condition, if it's not already in there, because my little, my, it's not, the number two is not staying up on my iPad.
Oh.
So it just keeps popping out. I don't know why it's doing. But anyway, Leslie, did we have the one-year sort of thing we do?
Yeah, we did.
Is that in there? I know we talked about it, but I don't remember seeing it because I read the thing, but I don't remember seeing it.
I don't remember seeing it either, but we could certainly add, and it was one year from the date of the certificate of occupancy.
Right, I don't, I don't think that made it in here.
Yeah, it's in, it's in our staff report John just showed me.
Okay.
Right here. That's.
That's, that, a one year.
A new little standard thing that started with the West Ender.
A one year, as long as it's just a one-time thing.
I don't think we have to go into the whole phone thing and all that stuff, but just a, a hearing in a year to go over any, something that maybe, you know, whether it's a complaint or whether it's.
Right, that's fine.
No complaints, something.
Right.
You know, that's good. Okay. All right, improvements to the sidewalk, and Hillary brought up all that stuff. But I, I'm just talking about what was done in like, say, in front of the Grayden House, what was done in front of Mooney Building, Noblets, is all good stuff. Never had one single complaint that I know of ever with all that private money that's put into those, the bollards, the bike bollard things.
Right.
Some type of, of improvement on that area with bollards, maybe with, combined with Mike and Rob, you know, that could make that better benches, whatever. You know, whatever is needed in that area.
Right.
Along, all the way to the corner of Chestnut, in my opinion.
Okay.
Which is all your property anyway.
So India to, India to Chestnut, essentially.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
These are the comments from Mike.
Oh, I didn't see that either. It's supposed to be popping out.
It's packet number two.
So that's all in there. Packet number two is the one that's not working.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so he's got this all in there then? Okay, good. Okay, so that's it for me for the moment.
John.
Besides the things like exterior lighting plan, landscape plan, utility plan, things that I know that you're going to supply, supply, just a couple of questions for consideration. You have mentioned that you were considering one to two courtesy vehicles. Have you made a secure decision about that? Or is that still a consideration?
It's, it's absolutely a consideration. It's not something we've specifically committed to. But I think it's something that makes a lot of sense. We were going to go through that with the operating, our operating partners and GM over the winter as we sort of gear up, once we know where this process is.
And Terry, why are up here? Any inclusion, inclusionary employee housing, something that.
So, so right now, there's some onsite employee housing, and then there's a lease that's regularly renewed that basically covers all the staff. We're, we're looking to actually buy and own forever as part of the hotel asset, employee housing. But it's not something that's, again, it's, that's not a done deal. I mean, I'm out actively looking at things, and we've considered building some stuff. So we're, we're trying to figure out what the best, most cost-effective solution for that is. But also mindful about sort of quality and, and, you know, making sure we have something that can tie to the hotel, you know, indefinitely.
There was also talk about maybe securing any satellite parking out of town. Any, is that still a consideration, or did you just secure anything?
That was suggested, I think, by one of the board members at the last meeting. It's not something that we've really explored. It's not something that, at least from my perspective thus far, has been necessary. It hasn't been a real pain point. This year, like, we started supplying guests with bicycles, which was, was rather successful. So we'll probably continue that and ramp that up. But in terms of, you know, the hotel guests aren't bringing motor vehicles for the most part. I mean, the, the location of the hotel sort of lends itself to not need to do that. So again, it, it hasn't struck us yet as a problem that needs a solution.
Okay, and Mr. Yankow had brought up a couple of points about no TVs, no amplified service outside. And I believe in the notes we had last meeting, there was a no serving. I think you had said 11 o'clock. There was discussion, discussion about neighbors bringing it down to 10, 10 o'clock. First, are you in favor, or are you okay with that? Or you have objections to those suggestions?
So in general, I, I prefer to have less constraints than more. Again, because it, we're going to have an operating partner who has to run the business, and the, you know, success or failure of that will drive what we get to do in terms of future improvements and investments into the asset. Off the cuff, I mean, the, the no TV outside thing, I agree with. I mean, I just don't think that makes sense in the historic downtown. In terms of, of amplified music, you know, we had proposed, I think, no live amplified music, which I don't think this should be a concert venue. In terms of having the opportunity to have music externally, again, my perspective is as long as that stuff meets the, the already in place sound ordinances and isn't disturbing to guests onsite, I think our operators would love the opportunity to, to, to figure out where that works and doesn't work. I, I don't know that it's critical, but to have low, you know, background noise on the, on the patio is certainly something we'd like to have. So I thought it answers all the questions.
Yes, and I think maybe discussion about having exterior music might be during maybe a daytime thing, but a certain cutoff at night with the, the people that do live in the town. Maybe we can curtail that to be a certain, certain time that's early evening. So then if there was going to be any entertainment, it would be strictly on the interior, not the exterior.
Yeah, I think that's, again, I think that's very reasonable, and it's, we would self-impose that. So I prefer to not have that codified in a decision and around the special permit, but it's, I don't think it's that big a deal because it's reasonable. The other question you asked was around timing. So we were asked to put an operational plan together. We proposed shut off dinner at 11 o'clock. And again, it's been pushed for earlier and earlier. Again, our, our thought was we probably wouldn't serve later than 10, but we want that flexibility in high season and just depending on what the impact of the outdoor restaurant is. So that was, again, my sort of plea, like, look, let's set this looser. We'll come back. If it's a problem, we could constrain it. And again, nobody has a bigger incentive to control the noise and so on and so forth than we do. We're the, we're the closest neighbor, and we've got lots of them that are paying us every night and complaining regularly if there's a problem, so.
Okay, and finally, is it still your plan to have a year-round business operational?
Absolutely, that, that is our, that has been our goal from the, from the outset with this. And again, it's why I'm pushing the board hard to, to not constrain us because, again, we're competing against lots of restaurants that go really strong and then just shut down. And we want to set ourselves up where we can really run this thing year-round, even if it's, you know, at break-even in the off-season. Because I think it's a, you know, the Roberts Collection, the location of it, it's an important asset for the town. As somebody who grew up here and spends a lot of time here in the off-season, I know how important that stuff is. So I'd really like to see, have the ability to, to do that. So that, that is very much our goal.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just jotted down some notes with respect to, I guess I'll start at the top, the amplified music, since we were just there. I think section 13 of the management plan addresses that after 10:00 PM, basically television stereos and the like shall, shall not be operated so as to be audible upon any adjacent property. So for me, it seems like a natural extension that amplified music would not also be able to be heard on adjacent property. That is how I took Attorney Yankow's comments. Maybe I misunderstood them, but that's something I think I would support. And in the winter months, obviously, you know, it's cold out, outdoor music is probably going to be less of an issue. I do, I do understand and appreciate Mr. Sanford's comments, looking, taking them at face value to try and limit constraints and have any problems kind of adjudicated at a. at a subsequent special permit hearing. I think that if there's things in the, in the plan that you all have proposed that are consistent with things like not having amplified music after 10:00 PM, that that would be included. I also believe, I believe Attorney Yanko mentioned the concept of this would come back. If there were any, anything other than de minimis changes, the management plan would come back to the planning board for an approval. I, I don't think that that means necessarily that the special permit, I don't know what that means. Maybe it would be a minor modification as opposed to something else. Just in the kind of cleanup area, number 16, okay, that was come back to the planning board for approval. Number, let's see here, within the decision itself, is it your intention through you, Madam Chair, Sarah, for section two to end at 2.7? That's page seven of the decision.
Yes.
Okay, the reason I ask is the next page is blank. And then it goes to section three.
I think it's just a formatting thing.
Okay, I just, I wanted to, if there was something going in there, it's not, it didn't transfer to my copy. I wanted to
My apologies. That'd be my fault.
That's, no worries. Another thing, this is just more, I think 20 years from now, and then I'll jump back to bikes and trees. The listing for the decision is that it's by building and then by use. And then the management plan refers to the hotel and the restaurant. There is only one restaurant, however, there are multiple, the hotels are in different buildings. And I would just ask that, that there just be a reference that the term hotel refers collectively to the hotels in each of the buildings. Again, for 20 years from now, there's no questions. I, I think the requirement for the tree warden with a review and a plan approval is appropriate. I think to the greatest extent possible, the historic hardscape elements would be preserved and/or replicated. And realistically, I think what this means is that where there's a transition from the, the property owner's land to the private land that, you know, basically you're, you're more or less, you're more paying special attention to those areas. It's a sensitive area and it's, otherwise I wouldn't mention it, but it is such a sensitive area right in town. And then I think lastly is the matter of the bikes. So the hotel plan, the management plan references, or the decision rather, I believe, references three, one of them references three bike racks. The site plan shows five. I'm all for more bike racks, so I'd like to say that as number one. And then number two, there is some concern that along the southeast corner, and I don't know if this is what Attorney Yanko was referring to in terms of socializing, there's an area where there's bike racks adjacent to the trash bins. I presume these will be for staff and as, as a consequence of that, they'll be, some will be restaurant staff. So they'll be out there after the restaurant closes or after the bar closes. So that is an area that I would suggest is of particular concern with respect to the neighbor and noise. I think it can be something that if you adequately monitor and police it, it doesn't need to be codified as you cannot be out there and make talk. But I do think that we need to mention, I think it needs to be considered as a sensitive area. And the only other thing I guess I would say is with respect to the trash area, I think I brought this up last time. Actually, I know I brought it up last time. And it may not fit with your program, but I do think an enclosed trash area, even if it's open at the base and open on the interior facing face or faces, so it basically would be a roofed, at least two-side enclosure to the adjacent properties, would benefit you in a number of ways, not least of which is noise and putting things in there at night. But also just the less attractive aspect of having a fenced area with trash bins there. Those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ladera, can, can I do that and then I'll come
I'm good.
Kind of going down the row, if you don't mind?
I'm good. I very much agree with the comments on the trees. I think that this is, you know, the heart of our downtown. It's a beautiful area and care should be taken.
Campbell?
So just one thing that came to mind as Stephen was speaking about that bike area. Because one of the things I was thinking, since it is out the back of the restaurant and employees take a break or something and, you know, are smoking cigarettes or whatever. And I thought if my, you know, if my house were right next door and the smoke is wafting up, I don't know what the regulations are about.
That's probably a health
There are none, right? It's sort of public.
That would probably be a public health regulation one.
Okay, well, just
I don't know, but
You know, if you have a 15 or 20-minute break and you head outside in that area where the bicycles are, that is where you're going to hang out and chat and
Okay. All right, so I'm going to offer some of my thoughts here. As I indicated before, I'm not comfortable acting on this without having our sewer director, Mr. Gray, here and being able to ask him questions. I also think we need the actual report from the tree warden or someone who has relevant expertise, if that means there needs to be a substitute or someone else. I, I just would feel derelict in my duty not to have had the chance to see that. And those are significant enough that just personally, I'm going to go through them all and you can answer, Sarah, and you're very persuasive, but as you can tell, I'm pretty concerned here. As to the trees, in the various documents here, the only thing about, the thing about trees that struck me is the language is, let me see which page is on. Is much care is reasonable or possible or something to that effect. And I would like to ask if we can impose a bond on protecting those trees because to just say, use best efforts isn't enough to me. If those trees were lost, I think it would really be a significant blow to the downtown and we need to do better than that. And that's also why I want to get more information from the tree board and more independent expertise here. I think we need to have an understanding about minor changes and what that might entail because it's a sensitive area. I understand you're asking for just a one-year review and we'd have power under the plan, a permit to come back and raise questions if there are any, but I'd like to understand what minor changes would mean. To Mr. Sanford, I think you observed that one of us had expressed concern about in response to John's question about satellite parking. That was me, in fact. And it's, you keep going back to it's about the hotel. I'd say it's about parking. That's a problematic area. We don't have, in my opinion, anywhere near sufficient space for fire trucks, especially with issues about the sewer and other things like that. So if you're going to have substantial seating for a restaurant, even in the off-season, I, I really would appreciate it that you think. I know we can't enforce it, but I'd like you to have really given thought about whether you can, at least during the summertime, have some way to, because you're, you're deliberately trying to draw on restaurant patrons and there just isn't space there. So that may not be something everybody agrees with, but just so you know, that's a concern to me. And it's not just aesthetics, it's about health and safety. Let's see. I agree with Ms. Altier on the socializing. I don't think that's enforceable. So I think we push back to say that they'd have to stop serving at 10 and that was with an interest in mind as to what you had indicated. I do agree with the issue about smoking and noise adjacent to the nearby neighbors and think perhaps you could relocate or designate a R and R spot for staff, someplace where it would not affect those nearby. I may have more in detail, but my own opinion is we should continue this subject, of course, to the greater wisdom of everybody else here. So if you want to have further comments, you're welcome, Ms. Altier.
I would just make a couple of comments.
Please.
First of all, in terms of having Mr. Gray here, we have, I'd love to have Mr. Gray here, but we have no ability to compel a town employee to come to a, a meeting at night. Maybe the board could ask him to come.
I think we
But generally, the way these things are handled is through staff as part of the decision.
I understand that and I appreciate that, but I was at another meeting with him last week. He indicated that he was significantly concerned about this as well as what we have in, in writing. So I think he would come and I think
Well, he's, he's not here tonight.
I, I know that. He put in a record, what we have, the record from him is it's a serious problem. What we have from you is a recounting of conversations with him
Well, right.
That supposedly took place before he wrote this strong statement of concern. So I think that he probably thought that the written document expressed his views. And I would like to suggest we need more and that's on us to ask him and to be sure he's here.
Okay, as long as it's on you and not on me to get him here because I have no ability.
I will go and ask him pretty pleased with sugar on it and any other kind of thing I could do to
And I feel the same way about the tree warden.
And I appreciate, I'm sorry I didn't know he was ill, but we really need that.
In terms of the, of the parking comments that you just made, I just want to remind the board that there is no parking requirement for downtown.
I understand that. I'm just asking you for clarification in that what was said is it's all about the hotel. But I wanted to clarify in response to the question John asked, it's also about a restaurant.
Correct.
So we need to be aware of that, that some, there's impact there. It's not just the hotel guests with bikes.
No, and it, it's also the center of town, served by NERDA, served by cabs, served by people on bicycles.
I just wanted to be clear.
Can I finish my comments? I mean, I, I know you don't want to hear me, but
No, I'm happy to always, Ms. Altier.
So this is the decision that we made as a town. Now, I can understand that certain people might disagree with that, but we made a decision as a town that we weren't going to require parking in the downtown core area because it's where we wanted people to come for these kinds of services. If you suddenly start to say, well, it's too crowded in town, then you're, then you're basically creating a situation where there's a monopoly on, or a, or a fixed set of, well, if you already have a restaurant, then you can have one, but if you don't, then there can be no other restaurant. Or you're pushing a problem that's a town-wide problem onto one particular applicant to solve. I just don't think that that's, that's terribly fair.
Could I clarify what I said just so I'm clear for the record? I had asked originally, gave as an example, the Great Harbor Yacht Club, which has satellite parking. We had a matter from them not that long ago. So there are examples where people voluntarily have satellite parking. And I didn't want there to be confusion in light of what Mr. Sanford said about why that question was asked. I think I said at least twice that I understand we cannot require it. So I understand we can't require it. I just want to cite that example and ask that it's be fully considered, that's all.
Well, Great Harbor Yacht Club had parking requirements. They asked for parking waivers and the satellite parking was offered as a mitigation for the parking waiver. So it's a very different situation because we're not asking for parking waivers. We're just, anyway.
We're not requiring parking either. I'm just asking that you think about it.
Okay. Well, it wasn't clear if when you ask, you're, you're entering a decision. It's not clear what you're putting in the decision. If that was to be in the decision, I would be concerned.
That wasn't what I tried to say. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Was there anything else you wanted to clarify?
Can I, um, ask a question?
Yeah.
John, can I ask you a question real quick, please?
So I want to just clear up this sewer. You know, I think we kind of think of the sewer break as like, it can happen anywhere. This all gravity down there, this whole property?
Yes.
There's no pump, pressure pumps anywhere, is there?
Correct, it's gravity.
So this is, we gotta just take it easy on the sewer a little bit. It's gravity. So what they mean by that, just so everyone understands, is, is just pipes, you know, whether they're 122 years old or 60 years old or 10 years old, they're just flowing, hopefully down towards another pipe that finally connects to the public sewer. It's not a pressure main that's like built in 1910 that's ready to explode because they're going to jack up a building and make a foundation. So we shouldn't, I don't think, I think what David Gray is saying is, you know, he just wants to make sure that all the improvements that they make are betterments for the public sewer connections, I'm assuming, and going into the best places. Because where we did the work downtown, I don't know what streets have been done, as I brought that up at the first meeting. Did we do Center yet? Did we do, I kind of forgot, to be honest. We've done three different phases, but I just don't remember what streets are done and are done.
We haven't done any of these three streets that have
He probably wants you to do as much as what is in the next plan to make it easier for the next upgrade, I would assume.
Right. And well, David had a lot of history with this site too, because he did all the plumbing on most of the buildings. And I think most of his comments that you just read are what we talked about on the site, him reiterating what the existing situation was like, not going out to India Street, which I was clear on, but you know, that was between him and I.
He wants the Roberts House's sewer to go get changed and to go out to Chestnut now? Go all through the property and go the other direction?
No, well, the, the Roberts House is already going out to Chestnut. What's that? I'm sorry, the Roberts House is going India by itself. But the meeting house connects with that through the building and goes through there. And they've had a lot of problems.
Oh, okay. So they want to reverse that.
They want to, yeah, he, he wants to, he doesn't want that pipe going, going through the Roberts House anymore. That's why he told us that the Chestnut pipe is the better pipe. They've already carried it.
Yeah, it's already new.
He's supposed to get us the information where that tie-in was that I was referring to.
And that's big enough, right?
Yes, that's an eight inch, right. And it's a six inch in India.
Okay, well, that makes sense. So, so what I'm trying to say, Madam Chair, is this is like, you know, fixing private-public sort of agreement. It's not like there's a pump station over here or something that's old and needs to get upgraded. This is sort of just fixing the gravity issues so everything goes to the right place. And as far as parking goes, I mean, I'm not, everybody has a right to their own opinion. Downtown's parking was set up before cars came here. Okay? There was never going to be parking in town when there were horses, let alone cars. We went through this with the Brotherhood case in that 2005. I sat as an alternate pulling my hair out, saying, how are we going to require parking in a restaurant downtown? You might as well just not have any restaurants. So the CDT zoning was set up so that it didn't handcuff every single project that came to us, because you got to get four votes to waive the parking. So if you don't get four votes, like Center Street, I mean, like the Union Street Inn had to withdraw their application to expand that building because it wasn't passed yet. And they weren't going to get four votes at that time. And I think Sarah had that project and had to just say bye because they weren't going to get it. So, I mean, it just doesn't make sense. The parking downtown is everybody's issue. It isn't one applicant. So that's just, you know, I like to, when I have an opportunity to talk about this historically, I like to. But, so that's all I have. I just wanted to clear up this sewer thing.
Thank you.
So we don't think that we're having some explosion again or something down there. That's not the case, though.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Sarah, Matt McKeckern, I work for Emeritus. We're doing the design work for the project. I wanted to just kind of clarify about the existing foundation in the tree. The new foundation that's going in is going to be replacing an existing foundation, but it's a crawl space. So it really shouldn't negatively affect the root system, if that makes sense. It's, I don't know if there's a pointer there, but the portion that's closest to it, that is not a full foundation. So if we need to, there's that, that is new. But then the one that's closest to Center Street, the existing bump out, that is a crawl space. And so if we needed to, we could do piers, selective piers. I just wanted to reiterate that that's not a full foundation.
Okay, thank you.
So, thanks.
So, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just, well, it sounds like we're maybe coming to the light at the end of the tunnel at the next meeting. And in hopes of having full information on the landscape plan, I just wanted to make a comment, again, back to that southeast corner adjacent to the neighboring property. There is no, there are no landscape materials, large hedge-type materials. There is no, there are no landscape materials, large hedge-type materials, at least in what I have proposed. And I think that with respect to sound attenuation, I would suggest that you take a look at that landscaping element as a hedge, maybe an evergreen, green giant arborvitae that can be hedged. And if it's deciduous, something like a beach-type hedge or a beech tree in a hedge form, that will probably go a long way in helping. It's certainly not gonna eliminate noise, but it will help to cut murmurs down. And again, since I don't see it in the plan here, I wanted to mention it. And I just wanted to extend my comment with respect to the hardscape and sensitivity to where the private area transitions to the public. I think the tree is a great example of where a little extra special attention with the contractor who's doing excavation work. I'm sure they're gonna be sensitive, you know, it's probably gonna be a local, somebody local from Tiscana or some other company. But just so that there are some construction document controls in place for work around particular areas where a little bit, where a little bit extra of attention can make a big difference. It will translate, I think, into the long term to a wonderful project. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So should we review kind of the list of things people raised? Ms. Altucher, do you feel like you have all those or would you like?
I'd love it if you would give me a recap.
Okay, please help with this, but here's what I got for notes. Nat's question about the loading zone and how the loading zone would be marked or treated then, is there more specifics on that?
Excuse me, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so their deliveries are coming in from just where they park there on Chestnut and wherever they find a way to get there. So it was two separate conversations that I brought up the loading zone issue as far as working with DP. I met with Rob, I walked around there a few Sunday mornings ago to kind of look at some of this stuff. But this is where we get into traffic safety, has to make the recommendation, it's a selectman issue, it's not us. I'm just trying to sort of steer the wheel in that direction. So just scratch my comment about the loading zone, because it's not gonna happen with us, but.
Okay, but it may be helpful to you to.
I'd like them to, to note that the loading zone on Center really needs to be where the hydrant is, the hydrant. I mean, it's the best loading zone that isn't a loading zone on Center Street. So, you know what I mean? But we can't ask you to do that here. I just want you to know that.
When you drive around town and you look at the loading zones and then you look at where the trucks are parked.
Look at them all day, yep.
They're two totally different things.
That's right. I know. I know all about it. The loading zone used to be on the sidewalk across from your project. So that wasn't long ago. So the other thing that I brought up was the bollards, but it's on Mike's list, which I didn't see because the thing doesn't come up. So that's all.
I wondered, Ms. Altucher, any of these things that you think it would be useful to have us have a comment that would go to the select board to get clarification, like the one-way street thing was the next thing to offer.
I mean, that would be, that would be helpful. I mean, the loading zones, honestly, it's like the third, it's the third rail. I've tried to do stuff with loading zones in town and I did not live to tell about it.
Let's just take a note for staff or for us to have some kind of additional comment to go to the board about.
The one-way, the one-way idea was, was a test for the construction during the off-season and then sort of maybe folding it into permanent was my thought.
What are the bollards?
Bollards are the bike things that are used and now the little hoopy things.
I thought the HDC hadn't approved those and there was like.
They just put them next to the, to the visitor services.
I know they did, but I thought there was a controversy like that. I just don't want to be in the middle of some bollard controversy.
They're all over the place in Boston.
Steve, yes, he's an alternate of the HDC.
So just so that, because this has come up, I think what I would suggest is that if we were gonna require something like that, we would do it through the HDC approval and subject to an HDC approval and subject to comments from the, the Antucket Historic Commission. Because they are actually come out with some guidelines on what can be used where or what should be used where with a historical reference, so that we're not putting these, I mean, personally, the bikes hide them, but in my estimation, but I also am sensitive to the fact that when there aren't bikes there, they're basically these tubes and they're not historically relevant anyway.
But they're better looking than a.
So not to sidetrack the discussion, but I think there's maybe a method where if something like that's gonna be required on the street side, we can refer it over to someone for an approval.
So possibly something that says that, I think you raised a question about number of bike racks. I think there was some discrepancy, you said between three and five.
I think the decision says at least three, but then when the plans were done, there, there are five. I have no problem changing the decision to say at least five.
Okay, and maybe say in a design within the guidelines provided by HDC and Historic Preservation Commission, is that the way you suggested?
Yeah, something like, just, not to be, it doesn't need to be obstruction, let's just move it forward to whoever's gonna be making that decision.
Probably like 40 or 50 of them right now in town already.
But this is not in the public, this isn't in the public sidewalk.
That's what I was talking about.
I know that's what you're talking about, but that's not what Stephen's talking about.
Yes, he is.
I'm actually referring to an out for you all with the public sidewalk. So you're not in the jam between it's public and now we're required to put something in place, but we can't get approval from one or the other.
So are you, okay, so in the decision, this, at least three, which I'll change to at least five, that refers to bike racks on our property. Are you, that's different. Are you also asking us to seek to do improvements in the public sidewalk?
That's what Mike's led us at eight. He was talking about eight of the individual things, all the way up to the corner. I mean, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, my, my comments were with a follow-up to Nat's, that those eight, so you're not in a position where if you're, you know, I don't know how it's gonna work, that you're gonna provide, you through the applicant are gonna provide bike racks or bollards in the public way. I'm just suggesting that whatever gets worked out there.
You're talking about design, right?
Yeah, it would be subject to a design approved by the respective commission, the HDC.
Okay. Well, that would have to be subject to HDC approval and acceptance by the select board.
Right.
Or county.
As a gift.
And/or county as a gift.
Yes.
I believe Center Street could be a county road.
Does that help clarify?
And is there some discrepancy here about the number?
Well, Mike said eight. I mean, I don't.
I think five is a nice middle in the number.
Well, that's two totally different things. Because the five that I'm talking about are actual physical multi-bike racks that are located within the project.
Within the property.
Yeah, I mean, that's a difference.
And Mike is talking about improvements to the public sidewalk.
Okay.
Which is, I mean, if, if it's eight, it's eight. If we can get them approved and accepted by the select board.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry the.
Yeah, that's okay.
Our electronic stuff keeps dying, so it's hard to pull up what he said.
Is it got right there?
Uh, let's see. John, I think you raised something about no amplified music after 10:00. Is that right? It wasn't limited to live, it was no amplified music outside after 10:00, was that right?
I did, and I thought we would, Mike, combine that with interior amplified for a certain time and then exterior with a cutoff of the 10 o'clock. And then I think Nat noted that would be good to get that hammered down, interior and exterior, so we can separate the two.
Yep.
So what were you anticipating for interior?
Terry came down and talked, I don't know what time it was, the second time, talking about closing at nine. But we were strictly talking about outside, as I recall.
That's right.
So, you know, inside versus outside is a different, different thing. So, you know, they have guests, so they wanna, I don't know what time they wanna be serving food inside.
I know we had the request to move it back to nine. I think, I don't know what others think on that.
The original request was 11:00 though, outside, correct, Sarah?
We asked for 11:00 and I think Mr. Yankow suggested nine.
I think personally, 10.
I think 10 is good, but completely done at 10:00 though. Not just stopping and hanging out for another hour. You know what I mean? That would be, those are these kind of things that come up in that year cycle meeting too, you know? And then music, I think Terry mentioned, at least I could tell.
It was a little confusing.
He was thinking about like those little speakers on the ground type, real soft. I think that's what he was talking about, to make sure we weren't saying that you can't have like, you know, something like a little bit versus amplified or.
Only jazz or classical.
Well, any station's fine, 97.7, that's fine, whatever works. But, you know, I think that's, needs to be clear too.
Yeah, I just want to be sure we're clear of what we're telling them, because I was hearing different things.
I caught that and I was, had that little thing.
So what are we telling them otherwise?
That they can't have amplified music past whatever time, but the little, but the little sort of speaker sounds coming out of the bushes has, is not banned. We have to make sure we know what the difference is, because everybody does that now. I don't know if that's what they were talking about.
The way it seems to be written, it's talking more about it being heard beyond its property law.
Right, that's right. Decibels, I didn't want to get into that, but.
So I mean, I think that's really where, where we can have something to say.
They have to be able to, you know, define between what's heard beyond the property versus interior sort of, you know.
Right.
And you made a point, yes, please.
So, I mean, just to be clear in my own mind, it's, basically what we're saying is there may be an allowance for interior music that's amplified past 10:00 PM. However, the cutoff for noise, any type of noise, that's electronics, stereo TV, amplified, crossing a property line is 10:00 PM. Is that what we're?
Right, I think that's right.
And bear in mind, they have to go to, you have to go to the, ask the select board for, for the licensing and all of that.
Right.
And Amy has to look at it all and all that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Sarah, do you think we need any further clarification of what minor modification is? Or do you think that's obvious?
Well, I think it's been obvious the way the board has interpreted it, but if you want, I can, I can make, I can change it.
Well, I, just given the debate about everything that we've been having, the number of nuances coming up here, I would just invite you, if you think there's a way to clarify it, to feel free. If you don't think it's feasible, then that's about the, the operational plan.
That's in the operation, in the operation document, okay.
Steve, you asked for something about the way the plans conform referencing buildings and versus use of restaurant versus hotel.
I made a note of that. I understand what that point is. You just want the hotel to be clear that it encompasses all four structures.
Collectively, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You also talked a couple times about hardscape. Do you want to say anything more about that?
Sure, so trash area enclosure, landscape materials for sound attenuation. And if I may, I'll just jump right into sensitivity at and along the private to public transition with respect to hardscape and landscape. And that would probably be primarily your construction management plan.
And I believe, Madam Chair, speaking of trash, we did at the last meeting specifically state about glass materials and not having pickup between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM for the time period.
That's, that's in the operating management agreement.
And the dump, remember the lady that came in with the dump and the glass thing?
Yeah, that's in there.
Yeah.
Trees, I appreciate your architects talking about the foundation, but those are such sensitive trees. I'd ask you to consider, I don't know if we ever impose a bond about trees, but I think we really need a careful analysis of the trees. And I personally, as I said, feel we need to hear from the tree board and before we get this all wrapped up, but that doesn't really bear on what necessarily is in the agreement. I just think we need that direct evidence.
Of course, you know, we could pull building permit and go down and renovate that building entirely without even coming here. I'm just pointing that out.
But I don't think, you don't seem like that's where you're headed though.
No, no, we're not, but I mean, I just, I think some of these conditions are getting sort of out of hand, given the fact that most of what we're talking about, we could do as a matter of right. And that we're here really for the addition of some patio seating.
That seems like a very, after all the time we've been putting in on this, that seems like a very interesting comment to make and to put in front of the board at this time. So I'm gonna take that you're feeling a bit frustrated.
That was brought up at the previous meeting.
So we may not have reached our special point.
All right, let's see.
No, I mean, I'm happy to have the tree warden look at it. I mean, the man has been out on medical leave.
I appreciate that.
We had a guy come from the DPW.
Yes, he said, I believe, did you say you're gonna meet tomorrow with the tree warden? That's what he said, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're committed to taking care of the tree.
We're, we're just trying to get it all put to rest and nailed down.
I just want to point out that we still have property rights down there that we could exercise, but that's okay. Go ahead.
Sarah, I just clarify too. A lot of the questions that were posed were, and I believe you can look back on the tape, it was consideration. It wasn't a demand. And if you look back, it was consideration. So we're trying to work with you to.
Right, no, I understand, but when you start putting them, when we start trying to draft them into the decision, it starts making it very hard for us to operate, essentially. So, yes.
So that's what I had for notes. Did anybody else have anything else that we didn't summarize here?
We'll try and pull David in, David Gray, and there was, I believe, a comment about maybe an R and R area for staff to smoke butts.
Where do they smoke butts now? I mean, it's, the place has been running for years, like what, nobody smokes? I mean, nobody dumps glass? Nobody, I mean, this is like, I mean, I understand why we get, I understand why we, there's one more bedroom being added in the whole place.
No, the restaurant is on a different scale.
I know, but I've been to the restaurant that's there a thousand times and I know what everything is like. This is gonna be a big improvement, okay? I'm just, I'm just saying that as far as the David Gray thing, if David's not available for this next date, like, let's say he's not here, it's possible, like the tree warden's not here. Don needs to be directed to work with David to come up with something in writing that states what he, I just asked him earlier about the gravity, the eight-inch line versus the six, so that it's meat and potatoes, Don. You know what I'm saying? So it's not just, oh, well, we talked to him. I mean, I'm just trying to speak for what they're thinking. I understand what you're doing. I just, to be clear about it though, if he's not here to say, yep, Don's right, we can't have another meeting and not be able to improve it. You know what I mean?
But I think if he has a chance, if he's not here, I'm sure he'd put something further in writing. What we have now is a record that says he has big objections and without having.
I don't know what, okay.
Well.
Sounds like he knows that they're gonna make it better, but, you know.
Okay, is there anything else?
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, first of all, my suggestion about David Gray was a follow-up. I think, you know, it's appropriate and perhaps even more efficient simply to have the plan, a final review from sewer on what's been proposed so that it's clear where sewer stands. It can be written or David, if he's available, might come in. He did volunteer at our last meeting discussing sewer planning, that he prefers to be here and comment, but I just think, we just want to make sure that everything's copasthetic and we don't need to put somebody's feet to the fire to do it. We don't need to have somebody here publicly to make a testament if they comment in writing. I think that that's appropriate. With respect to the, the R and R area, again, I was just following up on other comments to make sure it was on the list. If I through, may through you, Madam Chair, ask of the applicant, what's currently in the area now in the southeast corner of the property? Where the bike racks would be presumably for employees?
I think they're bike racks, trash area and bricked area.
So there is, there is.
That's the area.
An area where they congregate.
I don't know if they congregate there. It's an existing area.
So it's, it's not a change in that area in terms of use?
No.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. No, it's not a change. You know, on the sewer, can I just mention, we are going to have to apply for sewer permits. And I'm I'm assuming that David isn't going to go, well, this is a horrible idea, but I'm going to give you a permit. He's.
That's my presumption also.
He's going to put us through a million paces before he gives us a sewer permit.
And it may be that he he just addresses his, Madam Chair, it may be that he simply addresses his prior comments as no longer a concern or concerns that he will address in the sewer permitting process. And then that addresses the issue. But it's a matter of not leaving it open ended. And I'm not suggesting anyone would, excuse me, anyone would. I'm just trying to bring some closure to that part of the discussion because I think it's appropriate to do so.
Okay. So is there a motion to continue till September ninth?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Number eight-three-seven-six, David Webster, trustee of eleven South Shore Nominee Trust in.
What about?
I missed forty-four.
What about the, yeah, there's two small ones.
I'm missing a page. I'm sorry.
No.
Out of order. Okay. Yes. Number forty-three-nineteen, Christina K. Snyder, three Somerset Road.
Okay.
Is there someone here representing the applicant? Yes.
Big piece of property there.
Okay. This is, just so we know you're here, you don't have to speak yet unless you'd like to. I was going to call on staff. I just wanted to know if you were here. Holly, this is seeking a second driveway access. You want to review it for us, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's this is a secondary, or excuse me, a second curb cut for an existing secondary resident, or excuse me, secondary dwelling that you all approved. My apologies. And with the application is a revised driveway configuration. This was the primary, and this is a secondary that you already approved. They have been constructed and are going, I guess, through the the end of the construction process, pending your approval for this revised site layout. The original approval indicated a shared driveway with all the parking. So that's the proposal in front of you.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Snyder, do you want to explain this to us? You previously had one driveway. Now you're asking for two, and maybe you want to explain why?
Sure, Madam. So, once the houses arrived, there were two modulators that arrived about four weeks apart. It felt very commercial from the original site plan that was approved for the parking. So we wanted to make it a little bit more visually appealing, doing the center island, some vegetation. The landscape plan includes a shed with twenty white flower and crab apple trees, some lilac hedging. I recently installed sixty Leland cypresses across the back and half of each side lot line, and wanting kind of a little bit separation for the driveway for the cottage. I'm the only resident on the property, the only driver on the property, but it might afford me some rental opportunity in the cottage area, which was for the second driveway.
I think some of what was raised by some of the comments have to do with the nature of that road and what an additional curb cut would do there. Do you have anything you want to tell us about that?
It's been interesting to learn the traffic on the road since buying the property. There's a lot of commercial traffic. So I can't help that. I mean, this is just, it's a second dwelling for maybe some summer rental income.
Okay, thank you. Anything from board members before we open the public hearing? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, please feel free to come up and give your name and go to one of the mics. Okay.
Motion to close. Oh, well, no. Okay.
I just have one, one thing on this. Because it looks like, sorry. And I can't tell because on the photo with the blue square here, is that driveway the existent driveway?
No.
This old aerial.
Okay. Do we have anything that shows?
Yes. I actually brought that up through you, Madam Chair. I included the plan right here. That actually shows that private way going from Somerset. So it it looks like it on the aerial. Aerials are a hundred percent. But that's the access. So it's not on this subject property.
Those names are all still alive.
Okay. Okay. Well, just, so one of the things that's coming to me as we approve the curb cuts is sometimes it it hinders future development of bike paths or sidewalks, which I think this area is in. Some need of, oh, I see. Okay, now I get where you are. So that's those, I know which houses you're talking about now. Okay, sorry. So maybe my concern isn't quite so much, but I feel like sometimes we have put so many curb cuts in instead of trying to utilize existing access points that, and I think one comes up on Wero and South Shore Road as well, but that, you know, maybe we should think a little bit about trying to utilize existing curb cuts when when it's possible, just to stop the, all the points of entry. I think, you know, that that end up occurring. I mean, this is sort of a low use road, except for in the high height of summer.
I think that's why we have the responsibility to look at second access.
But it's also growing because we have so many lots that, just down from this, that have, I think, six lots were approved there. So there, and there's more building just down from there in that fifty-six ninety-five.
And the road's not a particularly wide or well, well graded road to some degree, I think. Okay, yes.
In this particular sense, I think the original, looking at the parking that was in the center, more or less looked like a parking lot. And by having the two curb cuts, I think it's aesthetically pleasing. But also, in the event, in the future, if somebody wanted to do something like a covenant for this particular house, it makes much more sense to delineate the property and potentially have a covenant home with separate curb cut access instead of a shared middle parking lot. Again, like I.
I think they've already created this design.
I don't think it's on the ground. I think you haven't put in that, the driveway yet, right? No. Okay.
No, it's just there.
Okay. Now you were going to move to close.
I think the most important thing, too, just that you brought this up, Campbell, is people aren't backing out in the street. Okay? I mean, that's our biggest issue that we have had in the last, you know, ten, twelve years, is trying to keep, keep the little hammerhead thing so people can turn around. I mean, that's the biggest issue. You know what I mean? What she's doing is more for aesthetics and sort of, you know, everybody's doing the fluff stuff now. You have to make it nice look, and you can't just, you know. And I think that's a good plan. It's just, you know, the key is that she can, you can turn around, even if you're not a good driver. That's good. You know what I mean? So you're driving out instead of backing out. So, so I'll move to close the public hearing again.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So let's see. Rosalie, if you would guide me, or Holly, if we approve this, then for the special permit, I'd have to activate you, Campbell, if you would. But we don't activate her for the curb cut. We only activate her for the special permit. Is that right?
There's, well, that is the special permit. So essentially, yes.
Revised site plan. Okay, yes.
Then the modification to the original secondary dwelling application, that's something that you can just, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment. I would just suggest, I understand that we're probably going to approve, if approved, on the conditions under staff recommendations. But if it is to reference the plan, I would suggest that we eliminate the reference to the particular material for the apron and just leave it as a permeable or semi-permeable material so that the applicant doesn't have to come back if the H D C says, well, it can't be blue block, it has to be Belgian block, or it has to be some other material. It just leaves the door open for them.
That's good advice. Holly, if you got that. So, Campbell, you're activated. I would note, too, we have to make the finding in italics in the second paragraph here. Would someone like to move on this?
I'll make a motion to approve with the board finding that the granting of the special permit would not have significant or adverse effect on the scenic historic integrity of the neighborhood, and it is not contrary to sound traffic and safety considerations, also with staff recommendation and Stephen's comment about the semi-permeable permeable material used for the driveway.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And now the secondary dwelling revise the site plan. So it shows two driveways. John, you want to move that?
Yes, I move to approve the secondary dwelling with the two curb cuts.
Second.
Okay. John moved in that second. And all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Number forty-four dash nineteen, Martin Charms and Judy Lemon, Charms trustees at the Twenty-Six Kendrick Trust, Twenty-Six Kendrick Street, modification number one. Holly, would you like to talk to us about that? Hello?
Yes. This is an existing secondary residential lot that's in front of you. Get the plan up for you. You have plan? There's ours, existing one. Okay, this is better. The applicant, this is a, the original covenant law, and this is the market rate law, and the applicants are wishing to construct a tertiary within the primary.
And that's in part because the tertiary possibility didn't exist at the time.
Oh, is that, oh, yeah, two thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yep.
Could you tell us your name, please?
Yes. My name is Jay Maroney. I'm representing the applicant.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything for us here?
No, not yet.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, you're welcome to come up. Seeing no one.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Now move to close.
Second.
John seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, let's see. This is a special permit. So I guess, Steve, your turn to be activated. Is there discussion?
Make a motion to approve this submitted, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Steve moved, Nat seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Number eighty-three-seventy-six, David Webster, trustee of eleven South Shore Nominee Trust in Otadell. Did I say that right, Nat?
Yeah.
Nominee Trust.
I don't know, actually. That's a new one.
Modification to Wero, Wero Lane subdivision number three-five-eight-oh and modified number seven-eight-one-one. I see Mr. Cohen. Welcome. Holly, would you like to tell us anything about this before we get started?
So the original subdivision required, Holly, I'm trying to get this up here.
Yeah.
So the original subdivision that the planning board approved required the driveway off of Wero, Wero. So they are requesting a modification to lift that restriction. The restriction said no driveway access shall be located, or excuse me. My apologies. So, yes. With that.
And this is really also related to the subsequent matter?
Yes, they go together.
To do with the architecture office, I think. So this is subdivision modification, so we don't need to appoint an alternate? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cohen, you want to speak about this part? And I'm sure we'll hear from you on the second aspect, too.
Sure. Just very briefly, I know that the board generally prefers to have driveways off subdivision roads as opposed to main roads. And that was the intent when Wero, Wero Lane was put in. It's a standard condition for that or any other subdivision. But here, the zoning changed later. It used to be two acre zoning or eighty thousand hardwood zoning, and then it became forty thousand in that side. So this corner lot didn't really exist at the time that that condition was put in place. There's a lot of pressure, as you know, the surfside crossing development is directly next door and is at some point going to go in with something, you know, substantially more dense than anyone ever contemplated when they were buying two acre lots out there. And so the homeowners in this neighborhood would really like to have as little impact on their street as possible. So they would really prefer to have that street, to have that driveway going on Wero, Wero Lane instead of on the neighborhood road. They want to preserve the rural nature of that road by keeping it not paved and those kind of things.
Let me see if they they want it shifted to south.
Correct.
Did not retain a Wero, Wero.
Yeah. Both the applicant would like that, and all of the neighbors on Wero, Wero Lane would like that because they want to have as little on their side street as possible.
Are there questions or thoughts from the board?
So I'm not quite clear on, maybe some neighbors are here that could speak about why that road that was put in as an access road for the lots along that.
We'll, we'll open, we'll open the hearing and see if anybody has to comment. Ladies and gentlemen, if anybody would like to come forward and comment, you are most welcome. Please give your name and welcome to the meeting.
Jacques McKee, Wero, Wero resident. I bought the, this is a forty thousand square foot lot, which is part of an eight acre lot I bought in nineteen ninety and subdivided. At that time, we took off the first two acres, which this is half of, as an A and R, and we subdivided the back three lots into two acre lots. At that point, I asked the planning board to grant me access for a curb cut from A and R lot onto South Shore Road. They thought about it, and then they decided that they would like to keep the rural nature of South Shore Road with very few curb cuts. And so asked me if I would allow one curb cut from the front lot, which would be eleven South Shore Road, onto Wero, Wero, which is what we did. So currently, Jack Weinhold, who is the, was the original owner of the two acre lot, which is the back lot now, uses Wero, Wero Road. So he has used up sort of the one curb cut that was negotiated with this board back in nineteen ninety-one. And I see no reason why curb credit shouldn't be given onto South Shore Road again for the, for the front lot.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions from anybody? Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
So just to stay on straight, Wero, Wero is a private lane.
Correct.
Okay. And so then is property across the street is expected to access? Again, I'm just trying to get away from, as this area subdivides to smaller and smaller pieces, I'm trying to get away from curb cut after curb cut after curb cut because it really does not facilitate safe travel.
So, so Campbell, I think if you look at the G I S.
But I understand that you're doing.
Just let her finish. I'll come back to you, Stephen, in a second.
So this is going to be a business, correct?
It's a home occupation.
Home occupation, right.
Mr. Cohen.
So I understand Campbell's point, but if you look at the subdivision between here and, say, Surfside Road, you really only have four or five lots there in between, which are all currently the subject of a forty B, in which case you'd only have, I think, two. You know, they're planning a big U-shaped thing. So however that ends up, you're going to end up with very few curb cuts on that side of the road anyway. It's not ten or twenty thousand square foot zoning where you'd have multiples. So I think that in the, the concern in the abstract is a good one, but when you lay it out on the map, there should be very few.
Right.
Your concern also is that that's become so much more actively traveled, that it's better to route the travel access out onto South Shore instead of on the. better to route the travel access out onto South Shore instead of on the side road, because the neighbors would prefer to keep that residential and quiet.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right, and you know, I didn't want to necessarily get into the detail that Mr. McKee did, but he, he's, you know, dead right that when that lot was created as an A and R lot, it could have by right gone on either way, and it was really a concession he made at the time to allow that lot, which did not have rights into Wero Wero Lane at the time, to allow that lot to have that access with the idea that it was only going to be one, and so now that it's two, they'd really like to not see more.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, behind you.
Good evening, Chip Webster, I'm the owner of the property, and I wanted to, we put a lot of thought into it, this is for myself, and as you'll see in the next application, I'm proposing to have my home occupation, which is an architecture practice on the property, which I've had on Antucket for twenty-eight years, I guess now. So we put a lot of thought into the planning on the property, there is a vegetative buffer that comes with it, we placed the driveway entrance a hundred and sixteen feet away from Wero Wero, so it's, it's a substantive distance away from it, and we planned it so that all the vehicles turn around on the property and will be coming out front face. So I just want to point out those aspects of it.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, is there anyone else who'd like to speak further, or Mr. Cohen, do you have anything else to add?
No, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to let, let the board know that this is the revised site plan that I indicated in my staff report that I did not receive, I just got it about twenty minutes before the meeting, so this seems to address the concerns for this as well as for the next application.
Great, thank you, Cole. Is there a motion to close?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
John made the motion and Nat seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and this one is, this does not require me to appoint an alternate, activate an alternate.
Does this require an alternate, is this a special permit?
No.
No. Okay, so discussion or motion?
A motion to grant the change in the driveway, you know, in the original decision.
To allow it to come off South Shore.
I'll second that.
Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Number forty-five nineteen David Webster trustee of eleven South Shore nominee trust in Otadell nominee trust eleven South Shore Road, this is a home occupancy permit, so I think I needed to activate, is that correct? So let's see, whose turn is it? Ladera. So you want to talk to us about this one?
Sure, yeah.
No, no, I was on one last.
I think he was.
So the home occupation bylaw is rarely actually, it's very common, but actually very few people actually have permits for it, but this.
We understand.
This is, you know, one, you know, maybe a first.
That was good.
In the fifteen years I've been here, I don't remember seeing an application for a home occupation permit, but I suspect they're out there. So as Chip Webster said, this would be for his personal residence, and he's been an architect on Antucket for twenty-eight years, and would have a house of approximately eighteen-hundred-and-twenty square feet with about twenty-six hundred square feet of living area and about eight hundred square feet or less of home occupation space. That home occupation space would just be essentially office space, there would be no retail component at all, you know, like I said, he's, he's an architect. Chip currently has two employees, he has had as many as three employees, and the bylaw actually allows this by right with no permits in any district, however, if you want to have more than one person, you're allowed to have one person who doesn't live there, and if you want more than one person who doesn't live there, that's what the special permit is for, or is, when that's required. So we'd be seeking a permit to allow an additional second or initial person, which would be the third person, or an additional person, which would be the, the fourth person, because one is allowed without a permit, one additional is allowed without the special permit. The main issue really on people is whether or not they're going to have an impact on noise and parking, and I think obviously an architect's office is very quiet space, you'd probably have less people coming to and from this building if it was just residential use, where you have people coming and going all the time, because Chip is going to be working here, he won't be actually leaving as much because he's not leaving to go to, you know, to the office. The amount of people who go to an architect's office is probably fourteen for the year, not fourteen for the day. Yeah, so, I mean, I've been, I talked to Chip weekly, maybe, but I think I've been to his office twice. The impact, I think, would be extremely negligible. The HTC has approved the plans for this building, they were very firm that they wanted it to be a residential-looking building, and Chip was very sensitive to trying to meet the architectural needs of having access, you know, handicapped access to the building and those kind of things, and handicapped parking without having it look residential, I mean, without having it look commercial, with maintaining the integrity of the building. There's also a significant requirement in the deed restrictions for the, that require a twenty-foot vegetative buffer, so it's highly unlikely that anyone would see the building to begin with, it's a fairly wooded area to begin with, and Chip intends to keep those trees for him and for the traffic and for the public, so that he has his privacy.
Are there questions from anybody? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, if anybody would like to speak on this topic, please come forward.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
John moved, Nat seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's see, this is site plan, this is not a special permit, so we don't activate anybody?
No, you still do.
It's a special permit, subject to site plan review.
Sorry, okay. Whose turn? I already did this, didn't I? Or, no, it's Campbell's turn. It's Campbell's turn. It's Camp, it's your turn?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the previous one was not for.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm losing track, sorry.
I got it now, yeah.
And I should also note that there was some late deliberate material, four-thirty or so, that, that I think addressed all the points that Holly had raised in the staff report.
Holly, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, under the site plan review, one thirty-nine dash twenty-three, these are the requirements within, there are a couple in here that we can put as a condition within your approval, if you're so inclined to approve. This is the site plan that addresses the, some of the items that I indicated, especially the point of intersection between Wero Wero and where the driveway is going, as well as all the site design standards that were included in that section of the, of the bylaw, which is listed here.
Was there anything to do with Wellhead or is there?
We, it, it's included from, unless somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, this property is right on the edge of the Wellhead Recharge District, so this condition can be included in the special permit as a condition prior to building permit, supplemental.
So, there's not a need to put anything in about Wellhead discharge?
It is within the Wellhead Charge District, based on what I see, so we can put that as a condition if you're so inclined to approve.
Yeah.
Okay, is it in your, your recommendations here? I'm not seeing it.
Nope.
Okay.
Since I just received this.
Okay.
That, that requirement, to get the certification from the water company is no problem, we would take that condition. It prohibits uses that we don't have going on here, anyway.
Yep.
All right, you have a gravel driveway, right, so that gets rid of the runoff.
Madam Chair, I mean, just for the record, the certificate of water quality compliance does not apply to residential properties, that's for commercial use, and home occupation is a subset of residential.
Okay. Then we'll scrap that. So we're left, though, now that you've seen this most recent documentation, Holly, your recommendation items are still the same as given?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let's see, we haven't closed the public hearing yet? We did close it.
Yeah.
We're moving so fast, it's hard to keep track, okay. Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff recommendations and conditions. Also, relief to be allowed up to three non-resident employees for home occupation, we won't include the Wellhead, but we would require a revised site plan, which I believe we have.
Yes.
Also, an as-bell plan prior to the inspection and the issuance of the CO. And finally, I don't know if I have to read this, but I will, that the board make a finding that the structure and uses are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw.
Thank you, John, is there a second?
Second.
Nat seconded, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're down to Stephen Welch. Number forty-six nineteen Stephen Welch, thirteen Waydale Road. So Stephen Welch is going to step away from here.
Yeah, sorry, Madam Chair.
No, no problem.
I was just going to comment, if it pleases you all, I can be moved to the end of the agenda.
No, no, don't.
Be here in any event.
This is going to not, unless you expect to expound for an hour, I think.
No, 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 please. And we continue. So officially recused.
So. Stephen Welch, who's the applicant here, is recused.
Is it in addition to?
Catherine. For the record. This is a request for a waiver from the definition of yard within the zoning bylaw. And we've seen this one a couple times before, it's got a peculiar shape, and that's the main issue here, I think.
I don't, unfortunately, I forgot mine.
Good evening, Madam Chair, so I'm here before you this evening, let's see, so that's exhibit, to propose a, for the record, Stephen Welch, here for, here this evening to propose a waiver by special permit to allow a side yard setback along a portion of a lot. If you were to look at the left side, it would be the existing front yard setback is shown, and then there is a proposed side yard setback. This is allowed under definition of a yard front, per the planning board endorsement and annual town meeting approval, and the waiver provides for a more traditional side yard setback in what is tantamount to a side yard area, or a year, a rear yard setback in a, in a rear yard area, in this instance, it's a side yard. So I'm asking for the waiver to create less confined space for housing solutions, including if a demo move-off comes up from another lot, it allows for a more typical side yard area, there's no increase to the ground cover allowance created, and arguably, the waiver decreases the perception of density by giving a little bit more space for construction while also helping to lessen danger from fire. And let's see, currently, that is a twenty-yard setback, I don't have a pointer, I apologize, and it is an additional ten feet to the road from the edge of the lot, so there's a thirty-foot buffer there, and with a ten-yard side back, ten yards, side yard setback implemented, it would be a twenty-foot buffer. And with that, I would pass back to you and answer any questions that I may.
Let's see, Ladera, you did the last one, so Campbell, your turn on this one. Are there questions? Otherwise, I'll open the public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anybody would like to speak on this matter, please feel free to come up and comment. Seeing none.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
John moved and Nat seconded, all those in favor?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. May I ask if, because I probably won't get a chance to speak after you close?
Oh, okay.
The public hearing. With respect to, before I ask for your unanimous approval, I'd ask that you consider, if you look at the side yard setback area, the proposed side yard setback, that's drawn as an arc, and what I'm looking to do is, the arc is typical for a setback from an existing structure, so it looks pretty in plan, but it's difficult, it's more difficult to implement, both with respect to the survey drawing and in the field, because if you're taking a point off of it, you're taking it off of various points of the line, as opposed to the intersection of two lines or a corner. Where it's typically used is when you're measuring from an existing structure, so for instance, if you look to the right, you can see where the lot line was generated for the neighbor, and arcs were drawn from existing corners of structure. So having said that, what I'm going to ask is that the proposed, that the proposed side yard setback line along Waydale and the portion that returns back to the structure, that that would just be a squared off intersection, like the one to the right in front of the home? I'm sorry, I don't have a pointer.
Holly, can you?
Oh, thank you. So this area here would be squared off like this area here, as opposed to having an arc which is, revolves around a point of an existing structure. So this would come down, and this would come down.
In terms of how it's measured?
Pardon me?
To what end?
It'll be simpler for, when I get the survey work, for the setback generating points for construction, if this is just a straight line here, so basically, this portion would be squared off, this small portion.
You're not changing title to the land or anything?
No.
You're just asking that to be part of the site plan and that we understand that that's where the measurement will be?
Yeah, so what I would, what I'm suggesting is that, as opposed to the setback having an arc there, it would have a square, squared corner like this area here, and that would be through staff as a modification of the exhibit.
Campbell?
So I have a question to you, Mr. Welch, I'm, when you referenced a structure to be moved here, and I'm only asking because this property has come up so much, that I'm trying to figure out what we're doing, is, do you have already identified a building that will be moved onto this area?
No.
So you have an idea of the square footage and therefore the density appearance and things you were referring to?
I have an idea for the density and the appearance, simply based on the fact that if there's ten more feet to build in, but you still have a twenty-foot buffer to the road, there's a perception of less density. I don't have a particular structure in mind, but having that additional space opens up housing solutions for the future.
Okay, so then my other question is, on the arc, I understand what you're trying to do, could you explain where in this current arc approximately you're thinking it would square off? Would it just come and do you see what I mean? Would this?
Sure.
Line come down and then just square off to the point of the arc where it hits the red?
Madam Chair, may I just approach the map? Because it's a little easier.
My pointers skilled, they're a little shaky. All I'm simply asking to do is replicate this detail here.
Yeah.
So this would come out and this would come down into a square.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was asking, is, no.
Okay, are there further questions?
I forgot where we were.
I think we're ready to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Close the, try it. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded by John and Nat seconded, all those in favor closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve with minor change and staff recommendation, and also finding that the proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaws.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one, number forty-seven dash nineteen Federal Express Ground Freight, not fright, Freight Warehouse MCD ten and twelve Dev Kim Lane. Good to see you, Mr. Armani.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I just want to state for the record that I do own a property within three hundred feet of here, so I'm not participating as staff person.
Thank you. Hello?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, staff, Dave Armanetti, Director of Real Estate Development for Richmond, here in our capacity as the owner and prospective landlord for this project. Good to be before you again, this is a new application, it's been a while since we've been before you with a new application, as opposed to the forty-third refinement of our housing and retail development, which is what we've been before you predominantly for.
Congratulate you that you're actually moving forward with occupancy soon.
Yes, thank you, with a lot of help from a lot of people, including this board and the staff and all of our consultants and contractors and applicants, we're well underway with the next phase of our Meadows Two Apartments, and on the cusp of selling the first couple handfuls of single-family lots, the informational session. The informational session for our AMI restricted apartments is coming up later this month, I think the twenty-sixth, in this room, that evening. So our lottery for those rental units, and for our eighty percent and one hundred and seventy-five percent AMI for sale units will be coming up, the middle of the fall, October, so.
Good work.
Some monster of progress, not just a plan on the wall anymore, and we're excited. We appreciate all the assistance, and appreciate your remarks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
You've done a good job. It's a challenging, multifaceted project, so we're happy to see you bring in another one, so.
Thank you. We do get a lot of help, and we appreciate it, and we're glad to really start to be making a tangible addition to the community. We've got a long way to go, but good progress, and people can actually drive back there now and see what's going on a little more tangibly, which is important. And at the end of the day, as we talk about, it's important to meet these statistical goals, particularly as relates to the town's shy list and safe harbor, which the town has now achieved with our participation. But at the end of the day, the mission with the housing is really to provide the needed housing to people who need it, and we're working hard to do that, so thank you.
Thank you.
So for this application, I'll do a little intro, if I could, Madam Chair, then I'm gonna turn it on to Don Bracken, our civil engineer, to talk a little bit about the drainage and the aquifer, and then I'll come back and talk about what's probably the most important issue in the board's mind, which is the potential impact on our direct abutters, several of which are here tonight, and I think will want to speak. So as usual, we appreciate the time that the staff has put into this, and Mr. Pesci has put into this. As the board well knows, there's a lot of items on the agenda. Our project alone takes up a lot of time with respect to the staff and Mr. Pesci, and it's always great when they can get these reviews done promptly and share the information back with us, and we don't take that for granted at all. I think the staff report captures nicely the fact that this is kind of the next step in the evolution of one of the important uses in our portfolio, who have essentially been in temporary locations, for lack of a better phrasing, for the last couple of years. I do want to introduce our team members that are here tonight, a couple of them very briefly. One is Don Bracken, the owner and principal of Bracken Engineering, who the board is very familiar with. It's our first chance to work with Don directly in his firm, and they've done a really nice job here on short order. We also have two members of the Federal Express Ground team out of their corporate headquarters in Pittsburgh area, Scott Rohman, who is their development and real estate representative, actually offices out of Texas. He provides a key liaison role with them when they do ground up development with the landlords. So he'll be working with us, as well as Andy Henry, who is their real estate liaison and brokerage representative, and they're joining us tonight and can answer any specific questions that I might not be able to handle.
Thank you.
And then also, Tim Bauschpies, who is one of the senior staff with Delbrook JKS, who is gonna be our general contractor, if we're fortunate enough to get approval. And I know the board is well familiar with Delbrook JKS's work, all over the island, most recently, the water department headquarters, fire department headquarters, the new self-storage building down on Tomahawk and Coffins Pit. So try and get them a little more work, keep them off the Cape, and keep them over here in Nantucket. So the compatibility of the use, I think, is fairly evident. If you might be kind enough, Holly, maybe to put up the aerial of the zoning. This area is what I kind of jokingly require, refer to as the non-sexy part of our portfolio, but the very important functional part of our portfolio. And if the board remembers, many of the board members, or several of the board members, were on the Nashob Crossing Area Zoning Plan Committee, all the way back in two thousand twelve and thirteen, that came up with the zoning for this entire hundred acres, including our site. And if you go to the, I think the aerial just below, Holly, this one, thank you. This shows this particular core of our seventy acres that was specifically zoned CTEC back at the ATM meeting in two thousand fourteen, which is twelve acres. It kind of forms this T leading back into the site off of Old South Road. And it's set back fairly significantly from the road. It's about eight hundred feet to the first red line off Old South, where Sale Seafood is, and then all the way back to where our site is that we're proposing the FedEx headquarters on, which is almost a third of a mile off Old South Road. So it's kind of in the middle of all the other action, and specifically was zoned for that purpose, to allow for the expansion and continued operation of these uses. And as the board is well aware, in your zoning capacity, there's only really three or four areas on the whole island that can accommodate these type uses. You really have the core of our site, the Coffins Pit area, and the surrounding area there, and a little bit on Marble Way. And really, those are the only concentrations that have CTEC or CI zoning to allow these very important uses to continue to flourish and expand. And this use in particular is critical to the island, and here's where I'll do my usual attribution to Mr. Lowell, to talk a little bit about economics. This fits into the economics category. It's pretty hard to live and function on an island twenty-six miles out in the ocean if you can't get stuff delivered to you. And this is one of those businesses amongst only two or three on the whole island that do that. Cape Cod Express, which is one of the existing uses right next to this site, UPS, which the board is familiar with out at the airport, Federal Express Shipping, which is out at the airport. And this also shows, the second aerial photo shows the existing uses in the CTEC area that are currently developed for similar warehouse, delivery, distribution uses. Sale Seafood, Pepsi-Cola, Coca-Cola, Cape Cod Express, which is obviously probably even a more important lifeline to the island than FedEx Ground or FedEx Shipping. So they would be very compatible from a land use and an urban planning standpoint. We feel that board can readily make that finding. The question here really, I think, is the operation and maintenance and management, and the potential impacts to the surrounding residential areas. And given it's such an important industry on the island, especially with the cardboard box economy, and Amazon, and all these deliveries, along with that importance comes responsibility. And we're certainly cognizant of that, and FedEx Ground is a responsibility of that, is cognizant of that, to be a good neighbor and to manage their facility well. We think this is a win-win in a lot of ways. One in particular in that, unlike a lot of uses, even though this is a new building and a larger building, the impacts, whether they be traffic or any other impacts on the community, really don't get bigger. Because the impact of this facility is not correlated to square footage, it's specifically correlated to the number of packages that come in and out every day. And even though the building is tripling in size from their existing location, it really is strictly to accommodate modernization and efficiency within the building itself, with the conveyor system, and to have room to store materials and equipment inside the building. The number of packages that come in and out of here every day, whether it be fall season or peak season, are really not gonna change in the near term, in the next couple, three years, even with the peak that we've seen now with the Amazon and the internet economy. It may go up a couple of percent or a little bit over the long term, but it's not gonna go up at all in the next couple of years. So for instance, the facility now accommodates between two hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand packages a year. That breaks out to be about four to five hundred a day in the off-season, and that peaks up and quadruples to about fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred a day in the summer. But they're only open five days a week, eight months a year. They open up a couple of Saturdays in the summer, and they occasionally open up a Saturday during the year and holidays, in the gift giving and gift return season, that's it. Otherwise, they're a seven AM to five PM operation, five days a week. Even this summer, as busy as it's been, and as good as the economy is, they only opened one Saturday, the first Saturday after July fourth, and they haven't had to open during any other Saturdays. So in general, the impact to the surrounding uses and surrounding community is gonna be no more so than it is today, and fairly limited. But we do have an adjacency, as this aerial shows, to the left or the south, right behind us, our southern property line, with an important abutting neighborhood, which is Woodland Drive, which was a subdivision that Mr. Guwaki had approved back about fifteen, twenty years ago. And we have three direct abutters there, one of which is Mr. Sherm, who's here tonight. He's directly behind, the middle of the property line, at twenty-one Woodland Drive, Mr. Catino, who's at seventeen Woodland, and Mrs. Snell, who's at twenty-three Woodland, which is a little further to the west towards town. So we're very cognizant of those uses, and the impact on those uses, and those people. We know them all. All three of them are people that we sold property to, the existing properties that they have. I've had the opportunity to meet with each of them personally, with respect to this application, individually, and I'm sure each of them will speak for themselves here as we evolve through the process and get more input from the board. So I want to talk about that for a few minutes more, but I'd like to let Don at least make a few remarks about the drainage and the aquifer, which we know is an important issue with the board, and an important issue with Mark and Chris and the Water Company, and the overall impact on the aquifer for the community. So if Don could spend a few minutes on that, then I'll just circle back for a few closing remarks, and I go from there, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bracken.
Don Bracken from Bracken Engineering. We have a site plan up. I'll briefly go over some of the site plan elements. As you can see, north is generally going straight up the page. The main building, which represents about eighteen percent ground cover, is on the west side of the lot. There'll be one main entrance coming into the site. There will be a twelve-space parking lot for employees and seldom guests, up and toward the road. This area will be used for truck maneuvering. If you've seen the architectural plans, we have doors on this side to be able to park eleven vehicles inside the building. Unloading with tractor trailers occurs down in this corner of the building. We do have designated spots for storage of the tractor trailers. The entire site will be enclosed with a security fence. Employees or visitors parking in the front parking lot have access to the front of the building via a proposed sidewalk entering the building. They do have to go through a security turnstile, where employees will have a card to be able to activate the turnstile to release, so they can get into the building. Throughout, there are some concrete pad areas for the tractor trailers, and the stands for the tractor trailers that'll be stored. There's also a pad area at the entrance where tractor trailers have to come through, have to stop. There's a sliding gate here as part of the security system. The rest of the shaded area is paved. The overall open space is twenty point five percent, just over the twenty percent minimum open space. If we could, Holly, go to the utility plan next, please. Thank you. As mentioned, it is in a zone too, in the Nantucket Water Protection Overlay District, which requires all runoff to be recharged on site, if it's over fifteen percent of the total area of the lot. As you can see, we have a fairly significant subsurface infiltration system for all the runoff. The roof runoff will be taken separately and go directly into the recharge system. The parking lot runoff will be treated through deep sump catch basins, going into a diversion manhole that separates the flows. Low flows will go through a water quality chamber before discharging to the subsurface system. During high flow periods, there'll be a baffle inside this that overflows directly into the leaching system. The drainage analysis that was submitted is in compliance with the Stormwater Management Act and the standards of the town that have been accepted in the past. We do know we're gonna need a water quality certification from Water Comment at some point. My understanding, Mr. Pesci reviewed the drainage, he had some minor comments that we can, that we can address in, in his report, but I think in general, he agrees with the way the stormwater management system has been designed. Also notes that we do meet the minimum of eight, eighty percent total suspended soils removal with the system design. I think we have eighty-eight percent, so we're just over it. Utility, other utilities will be served with the sewer system. On this particular case, because we have floor drains in the building, we do have a oil gas separator, according to DEP standards, that will then go into a pump system that discharges into the existing sewer force main system that's in the road. We will be bringing in two water lines, one for the fire suppression system, and one for a portable line. You also see that there's an office space that represents about ten percent of the overall building. This little dash line represents the outline of the office space, so ninety percent of it is unloading and loading of vehicles. The loading area is actually at grade, if you look at the plans. So there'll be unloading four feet higher than the floor level, so there is a conveyor system to bring the packages down to the level to be able to load them up into the trucks. If you could go to the landscape plan, please, Holly. Do you have the colored one there, or not that it's?
Um, yes, I do. Hold on. That's the one that you mailed me?
Yeah.
Yep. I just don't have it in that PDF.
So the dark, the dark areas where we're proposing plantings, these areas up front, mainly bayberry plantings along the front, some along the side. The lighter green areas, the lawn areas, that can also be used for snow disposal areas. Along the back of the property, adjacent to the residential uses, on the plan, we were showing a sound wall right around in this area. And then in front of the sound wall, we're gonna, proposing Leland cypresses to cover that wall, and then below the Leland cypresses, again, bayberries in this area. Right now, this is proposed to be grass as well on, on that side. I think with that, unless you have any engineering questions, I'll hand it back over to David.
We've got a few, if you'd hold on. Stephen, then Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Don, thank you. Can you just clarify, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So the grade is currently around thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-three feet, and you will extend to, I guess, is the east? Will there be retainage along this side? Because it looks like it's called out as forty feet on the grading plan.
Can we go back to that, please, Holly?
I just, I'm just trying to again, understand what's, what the topography's gonna be like.
Yep, up, down, one, up, you want to pass it right there.
So this will be a flat area, and then when you extend into what's currently a hilled area, will you have retainage along the right?
Yes, well, I, there's, there's actually an eight, about an eight-foot difference from this point to this point, so this kind of levels out here. So in this area right here, it's pretty much at grade, and then in this area, there will be a slope in here. To get, in, I believe this is a cut slope on our side, so we're going, right now, there's a, the hills are actually, there's one big hill right about here, and then a smaller one right here.
So on the inside, in your parking lot area, you will actually be lower than grade at the right corner by some eight feet?
Correct. Well, maybe not eight feet, I'd have to take.
Well, whatever, then.
Yes, it will be lower.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is I'm just trying to imagine what it will be like in terms of containing sound. I know you have a sound wall, but the fact that that's below the surrounding grade, as opposed to above the surrounding grade, will also help to contain sound.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then just on the comment of the landscape plan, I'd suggest maybe look at Eastern Red Cedar. The cypress now are getting a lot of serdium canker, and they're, it's problematic.
Okay.
So just, just a comment.
Yeah, I would, I would second what Stephen said about the Leland cypress, and I'm not sure that they underplant very well when they, they grow to the height that's being required here. I just had something, just a question in general. Has there been any thought of doing anything with solar to try and do any offsets for the energy on this, this building? I think it's, I believe it's about a hundred and ninety-two feet by fifty-one feet.
I could add, David would probably have to answer that question regarding solar.
I don't think we've gotten quite to that level of detail with FedEx yet, but it's certainly something we can discuss with them. Scott may be able to add some input here in terms of their national policy and what they try to achieve. If not, it's something we can certainly look into and come back with.
Yeah, I'm just thinking with the, you know, the addition of the conveyor
Sure.
System, and it'll be very mechanically oriented, so it'll probably take up a bit of electricity, and anything we can do to help ourselves is good.
And National Grid says we need to watch out for this, so.
We don't want to be the tipping point for the third cable.
That's already happened.
Just a few other points, if I could, Madam Chair, on the function, and then a few more points about the abutters and the discussions we've had, if you would. It is important, Don, inferred to this, I didn't make a specific enough point at the beginning, this, unlike the airport with FedEx Shipping, it's important to note, this is not a retail location. There are essentially no customers coming in and out of here at any time. The only time a customer would come in here is essentially if a parcel were lost or damaged. I think in all the years we've been working with FedEx, I can probably count on one hand how many times that's happened, so. There's not people coming in here to drop off packages or to return packages, and there's only a handful of employees. There's one or two office personnel, and then a handful of drivers and loaders. And to that point, even though there is a substantial number of packages And to that point, even though there is a substantial number of packages flying in and out of this facility and their existing facility, the magnitude of the packages kind of belies the efficiency of the use, mainly, I think, due to the efficiencies of the FedEx crew. The number of trailers that come in and out of here, even during the summer peak, is either only two or three a day. And the way they operate, it's actually a benefit to, I think, the neighborhood and the residential abutters, which is that trailer or trailers, in the case of when they have two or three a day, come off the freight ferry in the afternoon and come to the site and back in and sit overnight. They don't come in the morning, they don't come late at night. So that's a policy that's enforced strictly by FedEx, somewhat just due to the ferry schedule. So the truck comes off the ferry in the afternoon, drives to the site before dark, backs up to the loading dock. So the beeping and the loading impact of that trailer is very minimal at all, not in the early morning hours, and certainly not in the evening unless something weather-wise is unusual. And similarly, with the panel trucks or the delivery trucks that you see, those come in and out of the site only about twice a day. They have one loading cycle in the morning, they go out, they come back during the peak periods, and have one loading cycle in the afternoon. So there's only about a dozen truck trips in and out of here every day, even during the peak season, and there's only a handful of employee trucks, employee trips. So the usage, the number of parcels, as I said, that goes in and out of here, and the intensity of that really kind of belies the efficiency of the facility. Nonetheless, even that limited amount of noise and potential visual impact is important for us to deal with. And we've been trying to do that, obviously, in the months coming up to this, and even since we've submitted our application, partly due to some input from the abutters, partly due to some brainstorming with the FedEx team. What we think we're kicking around that might be a little more appropriate, particularly for the abutters, and I'd like to hear some more of their input, is instead of just a simple "sound wall" quote-unquote in the back, which I'm not sure the HDC would really love, even if we dress it up a little bit, we've got an idea kicking around about kind of enclosing the loading dock and extending a carport down the property line. Don, if I could steal your, thank you. On this site plan, kind of a structure that would extend in like an L shape here, which would first enclose this loading dock, which would be important in terms of proximity to Mr. Sherm's house, and then Mr. and Mrs. Snell's house over here, and then be kind of a low structure along the back that would be open-ended to the north towards Old South Road, but would be a footing with a wall clad with shingles. We could even put some architectural fenestration in there if it was appropriate, or lattice, and then that in a blending of landscaping could really dress up the back so that the visual appearance would be minimal. And what we've talked about even as late as today with Mr. Sherm and Mr. Cuttino is to really try and preserve the portion of the berms that we could in the back naturally, and maybe blend in this carport structure into the bank of that existing berm, so it really looks a lot more natural from the back, but has a much more enhanced function in terms of visual blocking and buffering and noise blocking to the neighborhood. And I think all three of the abutters, I think, responded favorably to that, so I think that's something we'd like the board to help us look into, maybe when we come back with a more refined site plan and some more engagement and input from the abutters. So we're definitely trying to think of going in that direction. And then in addition to that, maybe varying the landscaping in this area more, again, that points more directly to Mr. Sherm's house and towards Mr. and Mrs. Snell's house by maybe relocating some of the utilities that were back in here up into the front where we have some more room to do that. So we're kind of kicking that around internally, and would like to have maybe some input from the board on that. So with that said, I'd be glad to hear what some of the neighbors have to say. We've had good communication with all of them. Our role and our capacity and our stature in the neighborhood, as the board knows, is very important to us, and we want to make sure everybody's as happy as possible. And also balance balancing the interests in the jurisdiction of the HDC, which I know the board understands and respects as well, to kind of balance all that together. So with that said, I think we'd like your input, any input from the public, and maybe have the chance at your next meeting to come back with a more refined design, and at that point, hope that the board could make the findings and look favorably upon this application. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Dave, would you mind if I asked you a question?
Sure.
In reference, maybe nobody's thought about this, or I'm just bringing up for discussion, the DAFCAM road that extends to Lover's Lane. For 25 years that I've seen it, I've never seen somebody pass through it because it really is a swimming pool. It must be five feet deep. And I only address it at this particular time because in the process of building this, even though you're saying it's going to be low-impact as far as the traffic, 14 vehicles or so, at one point, when Shepley was putting their building on the corner of Lover's, we extended the paving to get to that point where that is. So I know I've witnessed UPS and Shepley trucks coming down Lover's Lane from the back entrance from the surface side area there. And I don't know if you've given any thought to any kind of improvement there with the increase of density of the, or the increase of the traffic.
Sure, through you, Madam Chair. We have, actually, and that's evolved a bit even in the last few months. As I know the board's aware, there's a proposal pending through the DPW to pave at least a portion, if not the entirety of Lover's Lane, and connect it through to the boulevard. And my understanding is those plans are being completed, but it still needs funding approval at town meeting and through the budget process. But I believe most of the town officials that have been working on it, and a lot of the people in this area, are hopeful that that'll happen and help disperse traffic more equally between Mid-Island and our site, and then sites east of us. And it kind of ties in Mr. Trudeau with that strategy. What our current participation has been through the DPW, in the change of the DPW, when Mr. McNeil took over, in addition to asking us and having us pay for some additional paving of Lover's Lane down to the Shepley intersection at Nancy Anne Lane, we paid for, completed the engineering for full drainage at that corner of Dave Kim and Lover's Lane to overcome that issue, and actually put in a small drainage sump, swale, if you will. If you go out there, you'll see it actually on the forest side of the right-of-way, but still within the town's property. So we've completed that study. We've submitted it to DPW. They've accepted it. It's going to be part of the improvements that they'll make. So it may not be immediate until that public funding becomes available, but it is in the plans. It's a little bit of a misnomer. Most of the public who are out there think, you know, we bought all of this and we own all of it. We actually don't own Dave Kim. The rights to Dave Kim are actually owned by all the abutters within that 16514Z subdivision, not to get too technical, but we felt it was still important for us to contribute a little above and beyond there, and we were glad to do that. I think the homeowners at that corner are struggling with trying to juggle maintaining the stability of their own property and their own basements with creating a bathtub there, which they've kind of done by putting in those retaining walls. So they've kind of worked against the larger solution. I think I'm pretty confident that Mr. McNeil will figure it out with us and will continue to help and make that happen as best we can. And then hopefully, in the near future, or not too distant future, there'll be fully paved roads there, and even this small amount of traffic will then have other choices to disperse.
Thank you.
Other questions before our open hearing? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, and it'd be helpful if you'd come up to the mics to comment so we can hear you and people can see you on TV.
If anyone's watching.
How are you folks doing?
Good.
Good, good. I live directly behind.
Could you give us your name?
Oh, Eric Sherm.
Thank you.
I live directly behind there. And my concern is, is there is a significant hill. If you could scroll back to the hill part there on the screen.
Hold the mic a little closer to you.
Sure, sure.
Excellent.
Okay, that hill extends quite a bit into my property there. And with the 15-foot difference, you know, space between that there, the abutters area there, I wanted to, if you could let them put a retaining wall so my hill doesn't collapse into there, because it's a good 12 feet on the very corner, and that hill provides a significant sound barrier. And yeah, I like the idea of the eastern red cedars as well. That's a good idea there because they're more permanent, more longer-lasting, and they're native. The birds like them, everything. But the hill is really important to us because it creates a sound shadow. In other words, the sound, you know, will go over it there, but a wall or anything like that, trees, we're going to hear that beeping constantly. So the hill is very important to me.
Thank you. Questions, anybody?
I just, while you're up there, Steve, you made a point about the HDC and the sound wall. Like, when you say "sound wall," Dave, you mean those things like on Route 3? Those new like cement sort of things that they're putting up everywhere?
Sure, through you, Madam Chair. Not.
I'm just saying, something to that effect.
Sure. No, no, Ms. Wall, as you're certainly.
None of McDonald's are very.
Aware, we would do something that would be much more vernacular at Nantucket and would be acceptable, not just to your board, but to the HDC. And that's partly why we're trying to brainstorm here with something would be, you know, would have white cedar shakes as a cladding, would have a pitched roof with shingles, and would look essentially like a residential dwelling or a standard commercial dwelling. We've had three meetings now so far with the HDC, and we've progressed a little bit. We haven't introduced this idea of maybe more of a structure in the back. I think they'll be more amenable to that than more of a traditional approach, you know. We don't want the solution to be worse than the issue we're trying to solve. We're very cognizant of that. And not to ever foreclose my ability to ever develop anything in Omaha, Nebraska, but if this were Omaha, Nebraska, we just put up a 20-foot sound wall, visual buffer, and be done with it. This ain't Omaha, Nebraska. This is Nantucket, and we're all aware of that, and I'm sure we can work together to come up with a solution that works. And Mr. Sherm's being a little modest here too because he's in the landscaping business, and he's already given us some good ideas in terms of how to maybe pull that off with a little more balance and have it work for him and work for us, which is our goal.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything further?
Sure. Would you, is it allowed to put like a retaining wall back there after the buffer zone to keep that hill and the integrity of it so we could plant on top of the hill? Because it's, you know, it's a significant hill there. I mean, is that something that's allowable?
Can I ask, Colleen, if you have anything to say on that?
The plans would have to be obviously revised, and Mr. Pesci would have to be concurrence with it. I'm confident that Mr. Bracken will make sure that of that is met.
And I think the only constraint would be height, but how that's measured vis-a-vis the hill, I'm sure that can be worked out.
Excellent.
Campbell?
Well, I was just thinking, it made me think of the Westmore Club where they're using one of the walls of a structure as a retaining wall, and whether with this L piece that they're speaking of, if that, the wall portion of that L piece were actually a retaining wall.
That's what he's saying.
Mrs. Snell, did you want to comment?
Thanks, Leslie Snell, 23, Woodland Drive. First of all, I want to thank Dave for, you know, working with all of us to try to address our concerns. You know, I don't have an issue with the use, but my general concerns are related to noise, which they're trying to mitigate, and lighting, which I think Mr. Pesci raised in his report as well. And then, you know, trying to move the building maybe to the east a little bit so that they could break up, you know, the back elevation of that. It's a really long building, and I think that should be addressed in some way with some vegetation or something.
And your letter to the board had also asked that conditions be included about hours of operation and times of year, and how many days of the week and things like that.
Absolutely, yes, I did submit a letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to comment? I have the sense, Mr. Arminetti, that you're anticipating that we might continue this so you can do another slice of the design. Is that right?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. And I guess, to Leslie's point, if I could, through you. I did forget to mention, we've had the discussion with the staff preliminarily, but we're more than open, as is Federal Express Ground as the tenant, to talking about and accepting specific hours of operation limits. Nothing we see either in the town's bylaw or in private or in prior decisions by this board troubles us in terms of what we'll be able to work out. They start loading around 6:00 AM. The trucks don't actually leave until 8:00 or 8:30 or 9:00 AM, and there's no night usage unless there's a mechanical breakdown or an emergency. So I'm sure we'll be able to figure something out hopefully with the staff.
I think there was also a suggestion about lighting, to have it be motion-activated rather than like a farm light on all night.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. That's something that we can just work out technically. I'm sure with the staff and Mr. Pesci can come back to you with something that would be suitable.
Stephen?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to touch on a couple of things because I didn't realize we, obviously, we're going to keep the public hearing open, so we won't be discussing after the fact. So just to give you some more feedback in the instance I'm activated, I think the lower grade within the site is a big plus with respect to noise and helping to mitigate the visual impact of the operations. I think the retainage obviously is a key element of that, also with respect to allowing you to utilize the existing landscape or grading in the hill at the rear. I think with respect to the landscaping, resilient and indigenous materials are going to be critical. So low maintenance and things that blend in so that there will be elements that are both visual hedge blocks, but also vertical elements that will help to break up the length and height of the structure. And that'll go a long way in shrouding the visual elements. With respect to the sound wall, you know, I'm sure you can come up with some different solutions. I would suggest that if you were to utilize a wall that is actually designed to contain these types of sounds, you may be more successful. One of the options you might entertain with respect to shrouding that is to plant something like a climbing hydrangea on it. It's not an ivy that will be invasive and break the wall apart. It will, once it's established, leap and cover it, and it will be a green living wall. Maybe that is good. If that doesn't work, I think you're going to need a butter input on not just the effectiveness of sound, but also the aesthetics and obviously the HDC. But if that were not to work, I would strongly suggest that the, whatever device is created, the built structure really needs to have sound attenuation built into it. Because even a small example of using open-cell foam within the structure can help versus using a closed-cell foam, or there's just different things you're going to need to, I would suggest, look into if it's not a sound wall. And then, yeah, so lastly on my notes, I have lighting, motion lighting, and hours of operation, so, which you've all addressed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Others? John?
I'm guessing that next month's meeting, if that's what we're going to do, continue through next month, we'll be hearing from Ed Pesci, our engineer, with any kind of comments, and also maybe from the HDC with any suggestions.
Madam Chair, through you. We did receive comments from Ed. I apologize, I didn't get them until today. So they were forwarded to everyone, I just didn't print them out, so.
I'm going to suggest that I activate you. I think Campbell is on, so I think it's Stephen's turn so that you're activated and we'll be here on the next one. Yeah. Nat or Fritz, did you have comments?
No, not anymore, no.
Okay. I would commend you on the ideas about keeping the natural terrain there so that you do have a sound shadow, and I think all the suggestions about having some kind of retaining wall, but also dealing with the aesthetics would really be helpful, and commend you too for working so well with the abutters. So is there a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion and continue September 9th meeting. If it's second.
Second. Fritz, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Wood and your team, very much.
Great. Thanks, Madam Chair, board members. We'll see you next month.
Okay, we've got, would you like a brief break for?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Pardon?
Yes, please.
Yes, please, okay. Till 8:00, is that?
Thank you.
You get to call.
When I come to you guys, measurements, you're going to have to like shoot an arc.
Yes.
So it didn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah, that was...
I know, I have a really thin hat on, and I just bring it over here, but it made its way to my house.
In your restaurant?
Just stays like...
Oh, okay.
I don't like it cold, but it's a little chilly.
It's also kind of...
To me, you know, like the...
Oh, it's fine.
It's just as...
It usually has a beautiful...
It gets cold in here. Remember that time we had our hats on and our coats?
Yes, because the setting kicked on, the nighttime setting, and we had on gloves, scarves, hats, coats, very head-on, it's like...
I can turn the heat back up, I know how to do it. It's a funky system.
It is, you have to like go to the home button or something.
It's not working right now.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Because I know sometimes it takes a while.
I think...
Can I give you...
Yes.
And I just want to point out that what I did, do you have a second?
Yeah.
What I did here was, I just changed this so that it's really clear, because it's at existing, I write that back.
Yeah.
So I just changed it a little bit so it's clear of what's what.
Okay.
I hope that's okay.
That's fine.
I'll leave you there.
Okay, that's not my stuff.
On that sound wall, do you as a neighbor think that the sound, you don't, do you care as long as you don't see it? Or do you want the most effective sound satisfied?
I'm there, sure.
Because in that area, I don't have...
I would like to be...
But sure, because I do see it.
So Campbell, I thought you were going to spend it by my email.
I apologize for making that too, we need to raise, to be A and R, I'd be certain that I understood that, I just asked them what, no sign.
Okay.
Just to...
And on site during the...
Me, my understanding is the same way.
It's, when there was a group that there were properties, like if they come before the...
Okay, that's something that I, because I did ask Judith, that's what she wanted to do, was hold it and bring it to tonight to discuss, and she just wanted to go ahead and maybe I missed, was inter...
No, no, no.
But that, if that's something, especially if this is what we're going to be doing, having these A and Rs, you have every right as a board member to, even though you're not a voting and your alternate, you can still give your opinion on this, and I think that's important. So if that's what you want, then I would reiterate that to her, that if you or any of the other alternates provide comments, that it should be something that's provided to this meeting, and that's, we can work with that within that 20-day required timeframe for them to be approved.
Right.
So that would have been fine.
Not stop at the end, I think it's a point of discussion that hasn't really...
It hasn't been told. Right, and that's why I brought the fact that, you know, here are the requirements under some of these control law, but if that's something that you all need to have that conversation, because I think it's something to bring about, obviously, I mean, look at Brant Point. But that should be something that maybe is brought when you guys discuss these town meeting or in articles.
Right. I did speak to the...
Okay.
We didn't have, about the issue that's...
Please.
Yeah.
Yep, they did an A and R. Yep. I've heard people say that.
So...
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and then that also ties in, and I did mention it at the meeting, was, you know, we've got, our Keeping Sir Above Water Conference, and I've heard about what we're doing, you know, as a hazard mitigation coordinator, with the preservation background, we did, and our MVP that we are now...
I brought my first, but I forgot dinner.
We got ranch.
I was thinking...
To specifically address our historical guidelines, the building...
No, because then everyone, I go home and I'm hungry.
Exactly like this, because at the end of the day, we got to look at...
You've jumped into something.
If you're on a new construction in that area, then that's going to be a whole ballgame. But if you're building, we want to make sure that appropriately, not just, you know, the same, but also within our construction context.
That still sounds really good.
Yeah.
Okay, so we brought that.
Wow.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I hope you don't mind, I am just going to, obviously, firstly, Leslie, if she would circulate the signature page, just so that that would be a part of the town clerk. So she was going to do that later, but I wanted to make sure it was okay with you.
Please.
I, you know...
No, you're so careful. Yeah, I know. It's absolutely...
Okay.
I'd do that for anybody, and I just wish it would for you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Folks, if we're, Nat, Nat, can we start up again, please?
Chair?
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry.
I'm highly encouraging.
Then go forth and...
Judy, that's it.
Okay. I'd like to resume, it's 8:02, please.
You're welcome.
8:02, from Monterey.
Yes, it is.
We're ready to start if you are. Do you need another minute?
No, we're good.
Okay. Okay, resuming at 8:02. Number 48-19, Old South Road Limited Partnership, Care of Harbor Fuel, Lot 1631, so Old South Road. And then we have a tertiary dwelling as well. And then we also have lots 17, so Leslie suggested we take all these together, so let me see if Nat's recused, does anybody else recuse? So this is a... These are permits, so I'm going to need to activate, I think, Ladera. We're getting a lot of action for our alternates tonight, okay. So, welcome, and feel free to address all three items if you would.
Sure, so Dan Malloy, Sykes and then Engineering for the applicant, I've got Dave Fredericks with me here from Harbor Fuel. So to make it a little bit easier, you have two identical applications. I'm going to talk about them as if they're the same, since I would repeat the whole thing all over again. So earlier tonight, if you recall, you voted to endorse the plans for Rupert's Way, was a subdivision the board approved the end of last year.
Could you pull the mic just a little closer, because they have to hear it on...
Sure, is that better?
That's great.
Okay. So the middle two lots, we're looking at lots 16 and 17, was a four-lot subdivision. At the time the board approved it, there was one lot that fronts on Old South Road, Lot 118, to the right, right here. As part of the planning board approval, that lot was geared towards more mixed-use, commercial residential-type uses. These middle two lots, as well as this last lot here, the approval contained restrictions gearing those lots more to residential uses. So what we have before you tonight is a special permit to create duplex, sorry, not duplex, tertiary dwellings on lots 16 and 17. So what that is, both of those lots have proposed duplex dwellings on them, which does not need a permit, or a special permit, I should say, and what we would like to do is put tertiary dwellings in the lower levels of each one of those duplex, so it would be a third unit inside one building, which, as you're aware, this past time meeting, that's now a special permit. So we have three special permit requests on each one of these properties. So the first one is to put a tertiary, a third dwelling unit within a single unit, being the tertiary. The second request on both units is to ask that the maximum floor area or the space allowed for the tertiary building be increased from 650 to 855 square feet, and the third special permit request is for the width of the driveways along Rupert's Way to accommodate the parking. The actual parking requirements that we have, because we have five bedrooms in each unit, the duplex is four, tertiary is one, so there's five bedrooms, we're required to have five parking spaces. We're providing six, just in our experience, sometimes these units, a little extra parking doesn't hurt. It does not affect the driveway width necessarily, but we would like to have the stacked parking on one side of each one of the lots. The driveway waiver has to do with the width of these three spaces here being 27 feet, and the same thing here is 27 feet. The proposal is to have landscaping on the side, you know, that was a comment in the staff reports. We have a fence down the property line, and we certainly agree and will plan on doing the low-growth vegetation at the ends for visibility. There's a walkway right in the middle between the parking, and again, the same thing, landscaping and a fence down the sides for screening. The tertiary dwelling is in the lower level. We are asking for an increase in square footage. There's maybe an architectural plan in there that shows it. There we go. So the increase in the square footage is strictly due to the layout of the building. We're not trying to get extra bedrooms or anything in here, it's still one bedroom, it's laid out as one bedroom. The basement space is laid out, as you can see, it's a living area, living area, dining, kitchen, and here's the one-bedroom unit for the tertiary. The balance of the basement space is storage for the duplex unit as well as the tertiary, the mechanical space. So I know the intent of the tertiary is to limit the size, we're not trying to overdo bedrooms and maximize more bedrooms, it's still a one-bedroom unit. And the entire building is intended to be used for employee housing, so that, the overall intent of the project.
Could you clarify for me again where the parking is with the stacked parking? It's going to exit onto Rupert's Way, is it?
Yes, so the parking, so Rupert's Way is here, it's a 16-foot gravel road, then you have the parking here, there's two stacked spaces right here, that would back out onto Rupert's Way before they go out to Old South Road up here.
And you said you've got more than is required, so that means you may not have active stacked parking all the time, is that right?
We're required of five spaces based on the use, we're providing six, we have one extra space.
Thanks for clarifying. Board members, are there questions, or Holly, anything you want to say to us? Please, John.
I just have a comment. Dan, I like the proposal, I like the use, I like that you're using it for employee housing. The only thing that I have a real concern about is the 855 square feet. You're going from 650 to 855 for the tertiary, and I know in past meetings that we've had, it's been a discussion, we've had leniency towards buildings that were already existing, and we understood that, but with new construction, we're designing these purposely to go beyond what we're restricting it to be, 650 square feet, and I'm just concerned that it's going to set a precedent to say that, hey, I can disguise it as employee housing for my, and I can create 900 square feet, or, you know, fit whatever they want. I like what you're doing with it, I like that there's individual storage space for the units above, for the duplex, for one, two, and three, I just have a really big concern about the 855 square feet, and it's not like you're just improving it 10 feet or 20 feet past the 650, it's 205 feet past what we've set as a guideline for the tertiary, and that's really my main comment or concern.
Okay. Holly, can you flip back to the architectural, please?
Absolutely.
So if that ends up being an overriding concern for the board, or something you're not interested in pursuing, or if it's a smaller number, obviously, our options here, what we would likely do is push this wall, I mean, the foundation, the footprint of the building will not change, what we would likely do is take and create more storage space here and push this entrance further in, so it'd have to take away, essentially, in order to reduce it, we'd have to create more storage space for units or other, some other activity in the building, essentially, because we're working within the proposed foundation footprint for the duplex.
One of the suggestions would be eliminate the bedroom in the far end, carry the wall separating so that the entire mechanical and storage space are on the one side of the foundation.
Yeah, that's an option that could be flipped as well.
And then where the laundry kitchen is, make that into the bedroom and push things forward.
Is there, because I haven't followed all these historically, I know this has been a question when you're going over to 650, if it's been approved or not, if there's a number that you're comfortable with, if it's...
I think we've tried to stick with what's in the bylaw, because if you, as Mr. Trudell said, once you start a creep, especially a creep that's like 25% or more above and beyond, if it's not, I could see if it's an existing building, so you've already got it in place, I understand why you don't want to reduce the above portion for this, but maybe others, Holly or Leslie, would want to comment on past practice on that.
I would, Dave Fredericks, I think we're happy to reduce it, it simply came down to, and I appreciate the possibility of moving the bedroom, it had a lot to do with the way the sewers, these are pre-engineered buildings, so there's a fair amount of work about how you're getting sewer water, other utilities in and out of the buildings. It would be easier for us to cheat the kitchen over and fit that in, and if that's the pleasure of the board, we're not, we really just, it was a foundation that we were just trying to use it efficiently, so we're fine if that's a requirement to get to the 650, we'll slide the kitchen over and redesign that exit.
Leslie?
I just had a question, is the living space 850 square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
So... It's the issue is the buildings are a little bit long, so we were just using the concrete space because it was there.
So with other new dwelling units, I can really only think of one off the top of my head, that was new construction.
Great one.
Yes, and that one had the potential to be more than one bedroom, and so I think the concern there was the intensity of use would be greater than, you know, what was being proposed, I guess. And, you know, in this case, at least from a staff perspective, it's clearly a one-bedroom unit, so I don't have the same concerns with this that I did with that one, but, you know, I do think it's something you all just need to take on a case-by-case basis, depending on, you know, the context of the proposal.
Steve?
I'm sorry, one moment. I just, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't amount to a lot, but I just did the quick math just on the living areas, it's actually, with the bedroom and the bedroom closets, it's 827 square feet, and if you drop the closets off that space, you get a lot closer to 800, I mean, just to say it. So it's not actually 850, it's... 827, again, with the closet space in the bedroom, if that closet space isn't there, you're at or almost under 800. I don't know if that makes a difference to you, John, but I just looking at the numbers...
Closets don't because it's incorporated into the living space, so we can say that to every applicant.
Yeah.
Throw out your closets and you'll have less square footage. And then it becomes a bedroom.
Two, with Nat recused, and I think Campbell's, well, Sodera, you're both going to be activated.
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
No, I'm not trying to create an issue, I'm just looking at future decisions, and I can just honestly see, you know, every applicant that comes forth, we once had it at 500, we increased it to 650, and I think this is setting a precedent, if that's how we want to go and make a tertiary 850, I'm all for that, but that isn't in our bylaws, that's not what we approve, and with new construction, I think we had the liberty to actually design our business to fit what we have approved.
It would just seem appropriate in new construction to try and stay within the line...
I would like to do is put tertiary dwellings in the lower levels of each one of those duplex. So it would be a third unit inside one building, which as you're aware, this past time meeting, that's now a special permit. So we have three, three special permit requests on each one of these properties. So the first one is to put a tertiary, a third dwelling unit within a single unit being the tertiary. The second request on both units is to ask that the maximum floor area or the space allowed for the tertiary building be increased from 650 to 855 square feet. And the third special permit request is for the width of the driveways along Rupert's Way to accommodate the parking. The actual parking requirements that we have, because we have five bedrooms in each unit, the duplex is four, tertiary is one, so there's five bedrooms. We're required to have five parking spaces. We're providing six, just in our experience, sometimes these units, a little extra parking doesn't hurt. It does not affect the driveway width necessarily, but we would like to have stacked parking on, on one side of each one of the lots. The driveway waiver has to do with the width of these three spaces here being 27 feet, and the same thing here is 27 feet. The proposal is to have landscaping on the side. You know, that was a comment in the staff reports. We have a fence down the property line, and we certainly agree and will plan on doing the low growth vegetation at the ends for visibility. There's a walkway right in the middle between the parking, and again, the same thing, landscaping and a fence down the sides for screening. The tertiary dwelling is in the lower level. We are asking for an increase in square footage. There's maybe an architectural plan in there that shows it. There we go. So the increase in the square footage is strictly due to the layout of the building. We're not trying to get extra bedrooms or anything in here. It's still one bedroom. It's laid out as one bedroom. The basement space is laid out. As you can see, it's a living area, living area, dining, kitchen, and here's the, the one bedroom unit for the tertiary. The balance of the basement space is storage for the duplex unit as well as the tertiary, the mechanical space. So I know the intent of the tertiary is to limit the size. We're not trying to overdo bedrooms and maximize more bedrooms. It's still a one bedroom unit. And the entire building is intended to be used for employee housing. So that, the overall intent of the project.
Could you clarify for me again where the parking is with the stacked parking? It's going to exit onto Rupert's Way, is it?
Yeah, so the parking, so Rupert's Way is here. It's a 16-foot gravel road. Then you have the parking here. There's two stacked spaces right here that would back out onto Rupert's Way before they go out to Old South Road up here.
And you said you've got more than is required, so that means you may not have active stacked parking all the time, is that right?
We're required of five spaces based on the use. We're providing six. We have one extra space.
Thanks for clarifying. Board members, are there questions or Holly, anything you want to say to us? Please, John.
I just have a comment. Dan, I, I like the proposal. I like the use. I like that you're using it for employee housing. The only thing that I have a real concern about is the 855 square feet. You're going from 650 to 855 for the tertiary. And I know in past meetings that we've had, it's been a discussion. We've had leniency towards buildings that were already existing, and we understood that. But with new construction, we're designing these purposely to go beyond what we're restricting it to be, 650 square feet. And I'm just concerned that it would, it's going to set a precedent to say that, hey, I can disguise it as employee housing for my, and I can create 900 square feet or, you know, fit, fit whatever they want. I like what you're doing with it. I like that there's individual storage space for the units above, for the duplex, for one, two, and three. I just have a really big concern about the 855 square feet, and it's not like you're just improving it 10 feet or 20 feet past the 650. It's, it's 205 feet past what we've set as a guideline for the tertiary. And that's really my main comment or concern.
Holly, can you flip back to the architectural, please?
Absolutely.
So if, if that ends up being an overriding concern for the board or something you're not interested in pursuing, or if it's a smaller number, obviously, our options here, what we would likely do is push this wall, I mean, the foundation, the footprint of the building will not change. What we would likely do is take and create more storage space here and push this entrance further in. So we'd have to take away, essentially, in order to reduce it, we'd have to create more storage space for units or other, some other activity in the building, essentially, because we're working within the proposed foundation footprint for the duplex.
One of the suggestions would be eliminate the bedroom in the far end, carry the wall separating so that the entire mechanical and storage space are on the one side of the foundation.
Yeah, that's an option that could be flipped as well.
And then where the laundry kitchen is, make that into the bedroom and push things forward.
Is there, because I haven't followed all these historically. I know this has been a question when you're going over to 650, if it's been approved or not, if there's a number that you're comfortable with, if it's...
I think we've tried to stick with what's in the bylaw, because if you, as Mr. Trudell said, once you start a creep, especially a creep that, that's like 25% or, or more above and beyond, if, if it's not, I could see if it's an existing building. So you've already got it in place. I understand why you don't want to reduce the above portion for this, but maybe others, Holly or Leslie, would want to come in on past practice on that.
I would. Dave Fredericks, I, I think we're happy to reduce it. It simply came down to, and I, and I appreciate the, the possibility of moving the bedroom. It had a lot to do with the way the sewers, these are pre-engineered buildings, so there's a fair amount of work about how you're getting sewer water, other utilities in and out of the buildings. It would be easier for us to, to cheat the kitchen over and, and, and fit that in. And if that's the pleasure of the board, we're not, we really just, it was a foundation that we were just trying to use it, use it efficiently. So we're, we're fine if that's a requirement to get to the 650. We'll slide the kitchen over and redesign that exit.
Leslie?
I just had a, a question. Is the living space 850 square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
So... It's the, the issue is the buildings are a little bit long, so we were just using the concrete space because it was there.
So with other new dwelling units, I can really only think of one off the top of my head that was new construction. Yes. And that one had the potential to be more than one bedroom. And so I think the concern there was the intensity of use would be greater than, you know, what was being proposed, I guess. And, you know, in this case, at least from a staff perspective, it's clearly a one bedroom unit, so I don't have the same concerns with this that I did with that one. But, you know, I do think it's something you'll just need to take on a case-by-case basis, depending on, you know, the context of the proposal.
Steve?
I'm sorry, one moment. I just, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't amount to a lot, but I just did the quick math just on the living areas. It's actually with the living, with the bedroom and the bedroom closets, it's 827 square feet. And if you drop the closets off that space, you get a lot closer to 800, I mean, just to say it. So it's not actually 850. It's, it's... 827. Again, with the closet space in the bedroom. If that closet space isn't there, you're at or almost under 800. I don't know if that makes a difference to you, John, but I just looking at the numbers...
Closets don't because it's incorporated into the living space, so we can say that to every applicant. Just throw out your closets and you'll have less square footage. And then it becomes a bedroom.
Too, with Nat recused, and I think Campbell as well, Sodera, you're both going to be activated.
Yeah. I'm sorry, John. No, I'm, I'm not trying to create an issue. I'm just looking at future decisions and, and I can just honestly see, you know, every applicant that comes forth. We, we once had it at 500. We increased it to 650. And I think this is setting a precedent. If that's how we want to go and make a tertiary 50, I'm all for that. But that isn't in our bylaws. That's not what we approve. And with new construction, I think we had the liberty to actually design our business to fit what we have approved.
It would just seem appropriate in new construction to try and stay within the limits, anyway, of the bylaw of 600. Not that it has to be exactly that, but I do agree with John that being over 200 square feet more is, is sizable. It's not just a, a small thing. And, you know, maybe people don't collect like my mother. But, you know, I could see where those storage units could be a little wider. You know, if the bedroom comes into the main area, you know, that, the space that's a bedroom now wouldn't be lost.
Can I, can I, can I, can I suggest that if, if it's the board's pleasure, that if we could get the tertiary approved, we would agree that it would be under the 650 and we'd redesign? Because again, it's, these are pre-engineered buildings, and so they get dropped in the way the sewer and everything's worked out to move the bath. The bedroom is actually, the bad, the bedroom, the bathroom in particular is a big move for us, but we can shrink the kitchen and we can get the building to be under 650.
Madam Chair? I think I'd agree. That's the best course, I think.
Can I get a clarification, Madam Chair? Through you, Leslie, laundry rooms, I understood, are excluded from the living space calculation? Or no?
For tertiary dwelling, the definition says that it's the gross floor area, which means it's measured from the exterior of the walls.
But what, weren't laundries?
Mechanical, I don't have the bylaw.
I thought those were excluded.
Mechanical's not into it.
Mechanical space, things that are customarily located in the basement. So, I mean, you could certainly, I think, make the finding, you know, that the laundry may not, you know, it may fit into that mechanical exemption.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying...
I mean, this is integrated in with the dwelling unit. It's not like a separate space in the basement where there's a hot water heater and HVAC equipment and that sort of thing. I mean, I don't think it's a reasonable determination for you all to make, but it's not exactly what the bylaw says.
Thank you. I, I don't, I, I just was looking for a clarification. I wasn't certain. And I don't disagree with John's points. I was just trying to figure out what numbers were what. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If anybody'd like to speak, feel free to come forward. Seeing none, is there a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close. Second?
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Is there a motion?
I just had one.
Yes.
I think staff was concerned about the parking and the vegetation between the parking.
Right, that's right.
Whether that was a concern or could be addressed.
Holly, do you want to speak to that?
Yes. Dan actually came to see me this afternoon, and he understands what the intention is in the bylaw. That's what he was mentioning about the landscaping. So that has part taken care of.
So it sounds like we need a statement about that in the motion referencing the conditions and also referencing the limit to 650 feet subject to staff approval of the revised plan.
I, I could make a motion if you...
I, I think I've got one, two, three, I think I've got Ladera and Campbell.
Oh, I thought Campbell recused. Didn't you say that earlier?
Did you recuse? No.
I thought you said that. That was not...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I think I had you on the last one.
That's totally fine. I thought you said that she recused.
No.
My apology.
Come on in, give me your motion, I'll be happy to do that.
You go for it, girl.
Do you want to make the motion?
No, I think John probably better.
Well, I just want to clarify, we're, we're also addressing 4819 and at the same time, 4919.
Right, because they're all the same footprint, right?
In my motion, I'd like to endorse and approve 4819 and 4919 with staff recommendations and that we would be limiting, limiting the tertiary to 650 square feet upon a new plan.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Campbell seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I think that now takes us to public comments. If there are any, otherwise, we have probably another, I don't know, maybe hour, maybe not so much, but I appreciate that we can have this chance at this meeting to begin to talk about town meeting possibilities and also about National Grid to give you an update on that. So Leslie, would you like to start us with this?
Sure. So we typically start talking about proposed warrant articles. Excuse me. So we typically start talking about proposed warrant articles around this time, August, September, just to get some things on the table to let you all know sort of what we're thinking for master plan implementation and anything else that's come up throughout the year. So I won't go through all of these in detail, but just to sort of summarize, you know, continuing on with the 2009 master plan implementation, we have a series of the RC2 articles. One of them was on for last year, and the person asked us to remove it, and so we're adding that back in. I think they're ready now. The Bartlett Road, Appleton area, we have not done a lot of work in there because it's fairly complicated with a lot of different uses that are going on. So we're ready to tackle that. We've chipped away at it a little bit over the past couple of years. Then for RC, over by like Marine Home Center, we would like to at least, if we don't move forward with something, at least get a conversation started with, you know, some direction there. Francis Street, which is some residential properties, maybe ROH, definitely Great Harbor Yacht Club. They have all of their permits in place, so we should be able to put them in a different district. The RC to CDT Commercial Wharf and Commercial Street, we've talked with those owners several times, and they're going back and forth about whether they want to be commercial or whether they want to be residential. So maybe this year we can get that nailed down. R1 phase out. We have SR1 to SOH in the vicinity of Broadway in Sconset. Again, this is phasing out the R1 and SR1 district. And then in Walwennet, there's a fairly significant chunk of R1 that we need to deal with. Separately from this, I've been, I'm doing some research on R1, and a lot of the bigger properties have a lot of, you know, subdivisible potential are out in Walwennet. So that would, you know, take care of, I think, a lot of different concerns if we move forward with that. Judith, did you have a question?
I was just going to say, have these that you've listed, you've not yet talked to property owners unless it came up previously or they came to you previously?
I don't think we've, well, I mean, maybe, you know, a few people here and there, but I mean, right now, you know, we're just getting sort of our ideas on the table, and then we'll send out the courtesy mailing later. And that's really when we have the one-on-one conversations with people.
So let's take a pause just on this first set to see if, if there's observations or comments or questions that would be...
Holly, do you mean the first set from the top?
The first, yes, the three that Leslie just went through, the R2 phase out, RC phase out, R1 phase out.
I mean, Leslie, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
We've talked about R1 to R5 for a while, and I know that that's like a, a bigger package, and we have some more jiggling with ground cover and some other thoughts, I know that. So I'm assuming that we're not ready yet because there's none in there technically.
Right. There's a...
I'm talking about in the, you know, outside the ROH is what I'm...
Yeah, there's a large amount of R1, sort of mid-island in the vicinity of the hospital, and then Brant Point is all R1. I think we're just not ready to tackle that yet.
Yeah.
But I am doing an analysis with the help of our staff people. I'm going through all the R1 parcels, parcel by parcel, to come up with a ground cover analysis. And I did put something in your packet. I did just a, a quick aggregate, and the average ground cover in R1, I think, is around 15%.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, quite a bit lower than the 30 that's allowed and the 40 that's allowed in R5.
I mean, oh.
Yeah. So we're going to be looking at that too. Anything else on the...
The Walwennet stuff, I know that there's been talk about municipal, I don't know if I say municipal, but community water out there over the years. It's, it's popped up a few times. And R1's been floating out there for 50 years or whatever, how long it's been, and it's never really caused a big problem because of sewer and water. You can't just build a lot because, just because you can do more on paper or legally, but we've had a few subdivisions out there recently that there's, there's ways to add. I mean, I don't know where, where would we go out there? VN or whatever you got out there?
Possibly some VN around the Walwennet, and then a combination of VR and LUG1 for the residential properties. I mean, a lot of those are, you know, close to the LUG1 minimum lot size. And I think, or R, well, it's in the country. It's in the country overly district.
We call that the country even though it's a village, yeah.
You know, there's a lot of wetlands out there. There's a lot of coastline. There are things that have, I think, kept it from...
The trustees own a lot of the more distant property and...
So this is basically from, from Squam Road out past the Walwennet is sort of the area that we're talking about.
Yeah, and that like, and this covers that little, what's the little road off of Squam Road?
Crow's Nest.
Crow's Nest. I was just down there the other day thinking about that. Do you, do you think we need to have a, I don't want to say a Walwennet area plan. We've never had any discussions with people out there that I remember. You know, because I think nobody really understands it out there.
So...
You know, the, the old property owners, you know what I'm saying?
So if we move forward with something, we'll do our courtesy mailing. That always generates a lot of discussion, and we can go from there.
It's got to be in the summer.
Yeah, I, I was going to ask if you happen to know, Ned, I, my impression is there aren't a lot of year-rounders out there.
No, there isn't. There's a woman that I just met the other day, oh, just before Ned King's in there, and there's this eccentric lady that has this really cool property. She reminded me of Mimsy Harbaugh. Remember her? I was like, wow, I've never even been here before. And she was talking about zoning. I don't know how she brought it up, and she, you know, doesn't realize, I didn't know how much density could happen in Walwennet, but she was talking about the rest of the island. I was kind of laughing. I was like, you're in R1, you know what I mean?
Well, and Squam Road's been so, so much development on Squam Road and further up that way.
That's all in one acre. Pretty much Squam Road is already LUG1, isn't it? Most of it.
Yeah.
I don't know how far up toward the village, though, but maybe...
The village is R20, isn't it?
In Quidnet?
Yeah.
No, I meant Walwennet, the Walwennet end of Squam.
That's all in R1.
As it gets, yeah, but it stops, where does the LUG1 stop? In the 90s on Squam Road, I think.
I don't know. The street numbers, there's a map.
I think something like that. We have the...
Hand-drawn map.
Annual meeting, and part of Squam Road is part of the Walwennet Association. So it's just, it feels different toward the Walwennet end of that. So I think, I think you have a good idea to think about some kind of, at least to convene people and inquire about what they'd like to think going forward. I'd, I'd have to say too, just, I think that it's so fragile in terms of the water rise and things like that.
There's a lot of wetlands on Squam where there's like one, which is kind of, you know, unique in that way. It's got the right zoning, but it's also got restrictions with water, so.
Well, when they get the letters, I'm sure I will hear from them because my name's on the letter, my phone number.
I see Dan came back. Was there something you needed from us? Because we're on to other topics, but did you...
I was just going to offer a quick comment on this particular one, if it would help.
Feel free, no, please.
I, I haven't done a lot of work in Walwennet. Something to consider, maybe consider the uses rather than the zoning dimensional issues themselves. The whole area, well, the whole area is subject to well and septic requirements, so you can't do much under R1. Even if you subdivided your 100,000 square foot lot into 10 lots, you can't build on 10 lots. It's physically impossible. So I would just, when you're looking at it, think more of the uses for the neighborhood than caring about lot sizes, because you can't exercise that use anyways. You physically can't do it.
We're thinking about it also, I'd be curious about the kind of demographics of the property owners, because if there are older people who might sell at some point, it might look different depending on the next generation, and there's a bike path slated, right? How long from now is that?
It's probably going to happen sooner than anything else is going to...
Well, I'm saying, the only thing that could ever increase development out there was if, is if sewer and water appeared, and that's, I'm not even sure if that's on a master plan 100 years from now. That's a real...
I don't think that'll ever happen.
May I?
So I, I don't disagree with Dan at all, but I just want to point out that, and I, I'm not suggesting it's going to happen within the next 100 years, but there is the sewer master plan ongoing, and this is a use area. And it's not necessarily a use area for sewer for, and water for development purposes, but for ecological preservation may push, depending on what, what's happening, like out in Matic is an example, where there would be pressure to develop sewer and water, actually to protect the ecological resource.
Like wells and septic.
Yeah. So I, I just mentioned because they came in front of us for a capital program on that, and I believe Walwennet was one of the areas, and again, I wanted to spell anything before it begins. It's not a priority area, but I just wanted to mention that.
Thanks. Were there other comments on this first set? Okay. Leslie, you want to go on? I see some of these are ones we're probably going to want to come back to, like the swimming pools, but maybe just give us an overview if you would.
I mean, just for tonight, I just wanted you all to know what's on our radar as staff for the upcoming town meeting. So zoning bylaw amendments, the building commissioner is working on a bylaw that would take building code application requirements out of the zoning bylaw. That's something that we've wanted to do for a while, but we didn't have, I guess, cooperation on that, and now we do. So I think there's a lot of stuff sort of shoved in the back of the zoning bylaw that doesn't need to be part of zoning. So he's working on that.
Could you give an example of what that might be?
Like an application for a building permit should include a site plan.
All right.
It's like, that's at the discretion of the building commissioner. It's not a zoning matter.
So it's kind of a reorganization to make the requirements be more clearly available to people?
So he, he and I are on a work group with some other town officials dealing with some construction-related issues. So as part of that, we're thinking about a new general bylaw that would have, you know, various requirements related to construction in it. So it would make sense to pull some of this building permit application stuff out of zoning and put it into a new section of the general bylaw.
Okay.
But again, that's not so much a planning board thing, but a little bit, because we'll have a zoning article to remove some of that. So swimming pool allowance in R1, I think this is something Fritz and Andrew had talked about. I'm doing a lot of R1 research right now, so that will be forthcoming. Miscellaneous technical amendments, I mean, there's always stuff that comes up. Right now, we have some language in the bylaw that conflicts with mass general law, landscape contractor, we think could be better defined, so there will be other things that come up. Judith, your open space zoning, which I know Andrew had talked with you about, maybe some MMD changes that could...
Right, just to update the board, we had a very good presentation from Sewer and Water and from Steve about infrastructure, how forward-looking infrastructure might affect where there should be open space or where there should be affordable housing, and agreed that we were going to proceed looking at models of two things, something that Andrew's now using the same terms I use, that I call it resource protection district that is fragile that is fragile ecologically. And Andrew suggested maybe we could look at the Marlins district and have that as an example of what you might do and possibly generalize from that for something that could be used in multiple places. Um, and, um, also to look more directly at samples about open space. We still may have disagreement from some of the conservation organizations about their willingness to, um, agree to that. But I think our sense is, um, basically, at least Andrew and I and Tucker who's staffing it, is that we're making headway that people are learning from each other about what the issues are. I think it's pretty clear that, uh, there's no point, Brooke Moore, who's from the Affordable Housing Task Force at the last meeting, there's really no point trying to go to the forty B provisions about open space because we're far enough away from that. Tucker and Nathan and others have gone through analysis of that, having checked the actual acreage held by various people. So that, we're kinda putting that behind us and moving on to think about what other kinds of models might be appropriate to create districts, not necessarily to put them on the map. So we'll see how that goes out on, but our goal is to have come up with some kind of report by the end of the calendar year. Onward.
Um, so general bylaw amendments, um, poles and wires, that's something you all were interested in because of the L eight project. Um, I put a copy of that in your packet so you could just familiarize yourself with what, um, we have now in the bylaw. Um, noise, this is something that's always on the list and doesn't usually get dealt with. But, um, the zoning, excuse me, the noise bylaw references zoning districts that don't exist. It doesn't reference zoning districts that do exist, so that needs some updating. Um, streets and sidewalks, I sort of touched on that, that's something Paul and I are working on through our work group. Um, same thing with the next one. Um, swimming pools, again, this one's not specific to planning board. Um, the building commissioner's looking into something, um, the building code changed. And, um, there used to be a requirement to install a fence. And now if you have an automatic pool cover, that's not a requirement and it's causing, you know, quite a bit of upset.
Some people wanna see the fence because it kinda screens the pool a little bit.
Or you don't.
Animals, dogs.
Yeah, or, you know.
Kids that were mature from next door.
Yeah, I mean.
I was just thinking about this.
The main, the main concern that I have heard is, well, first of all, just general safety. People seem to think that a fence is safer. Um, but, you know, the, the neighbor that goes away, then they come back and there's an open pool in the backyard. And now the neighbor feels like they have to, you know, spend money to put in their own fence or to, you know, police all the time.
Saying, so somebody can walk from one, on one property.
Yeah. So, you know, just, again, that's just something that's sort of on the list to think about.
That's like not, that's something that we can still require in the Intucket. We don't have to just say, you know.
We're, we're looking into it, I mean, it seems to me like something we could require in a general bylaw. But I know there's some issue with including local regulations that conflict with the building code that might be an issue. I, I don't know, I, the building commissioner's looking into it, so that one was to be continued.
You know, have fencing requirements, so it comes from the concept of, legal concept of public nuisance and what you need to do to.
Intractable nuisance, you draw kids to just go and die. But that's good, you're looking at that, cause I can't remember where that came up. That it was so startling to, to hear that they, the fact that the building code doesn't require it doesn't mean it prohibits it, I would think.
But that's sort of what I think too, but we're looking into that. Um, so home role petitions, there'll probably be some more of those that aren't planning board related, but that we're working on. Um, out of the staffing study that was done, um, the consultants suggested, which we totally agree with them, um, that perhaps the H T C enabling legislation could be changed to allow, um, staff to review certain application types. Um, so that's something to look into for the H T C. And then we'll have, I'm sure, various real estate matters that we're assisting with.
What, could you say what North Top Hook is?
I'm not actually sure that's the name of the road, which is, I have a question mark by.
That's on the other side of Milestone?
Yeah, it's on the, yeah, it's on the other side of Milestone. It leads back to some land bank property, it's sort of near the water tower. Oh, is that part of it?
Um, the. Top hook when it ends, out there.
Well, the only private property owner on the road is interested in acquiring part of the road.
I was gonna say there's one driveway, well, a house that uses that.
Right, so anyway, we're just looking into that. I think town meeting may have actually authorized that already for a yard sale, but I've gotta do the research.
Could I add one more that I think we've talked about previously, uh, which is secondary dwellings? Uh, I don't know that we'd come up with anything different than what we have. But I, I think Fritz, you raised that at one point, it, it, it seems like a broad enough policy issue and it is a driver of, uh, growth that is, uh.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it a little bit last year and I think it's, uh, and it's come up in the context of a language that's in the bylaw about primary purpose. And so I think we ought to be figuring out is, is that, is that, is it the primary purpose or is it not the primary purpose? And make some decisions.
Well, on that, I should've had that on the list because Andrew, before he left on vacation last week, was busy doing research about second dwellings and how the bylaw has evolved over time. So I think we'll have that for your September meeting.
I want to ask Nat his thoughts on this. Um, no, because of N P E D C, uh, we had bicycle proposals. Uh, uh, that Ian Golden had presented him. Since the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee is connected to N P E D C, do you think we should be trying to create a, well, or, or to work with that group to, uh, I'd rather, it just seems to me like if we know there's bubbling issues, it's probably better if we own it within the commission than have a lot of different, uh, individual petitions.
Lose a lot of support for that article as far as the general purpose and any of it. And it wasn't, I don't think it was just because of the incident, I think it's true regardless, you know? But there was a lot of language issues that needed to get cleaned up, as I recall. And I think that the like, you know, BPAC was, was kinda.
But I would think if, if you were to ask them to say, come in and be on the agenda uh, to talk about what they may be thinking about, it, it might be fruitful to just let them know that, what the deadlines are and that kinda thing.
Yeah, well, Ian certainly knows that and Jason, you're talking about getting it. If we're gonna have something for this year, just we gotta hurry up and do it or we're not gonna be able to talk about it. Is that what you mean?
I mean, that we'll probably talk about, cause somebody will propose it. But wouldn't it be better if we got it, uh, brought forward to the commission to talk about it, to maybe help? Well, or October, I mean, if it's something, N P E D C might sponsor it. So then it, it wouldn't have a November deadline, it could be later. But it's like, they're the group that has the expertise, so if, if you.
So you're saying if it.
If you were to schedule it.
Citizen article, it's got less time.
Yeah, I could just, I think Ian was away for the last meeting when that issue came, came up redoing the language.
Cause you're on this now, right? So give us a status report.
But we didn't carry it forward, cause Ian wasn't there.
I see.
He's sort of the mastermind of what the intent is. Um, I know that, uh, one thing they were looking at are these, um, small stop signs that are, could be posted voluntarily on property as they exit in front of a bike path or what have you. But, um, you know, hadn't really defined exactly like how far off the road, how you would do that. And then to try and have, uh, get feedback, have a trial period with that and get feedback from the renters and things, cause those are usually apparently the ones that are seasonal and renters are the ones that are least aware of the bike path at, at the end of the road there, so.
Well, I've had bicyclists, and there's many bicycles around, but saying that they really don't, they find the number of stop signs on bike paths very confusing and people don't really stop anyway. And it, it just seems to me there, we've been encouraging, uh, biking and walking and other things.
Well, I think over the years, the habit is, I mean, even downtown, who doesn't just walk down the middle of the street? I mean, but we've become very busy, so it is. But the habit fell a long time ago and now.
The main thing was just to see if you thought that was something appropriate to.
I do have his number on my phone, I'm gonna message him and ask him, you know, where, where we are and get an update.
That's great.
And I'll have, you know, get it to staff if, if it's something that we need to get on the agenda or not.
And then, uh, just briefly to say another word about the poles and overhead wires. Uh, I'm gonna save the N eight till the end here, but.
Yeah, we're talking about projects.
Right, but, um, I think some of what Andrew suggested on that was possibly extending the area that is covered. Cause literally the way this is crafted, it's talking about the core historic area. So it may be that we want to extend how far it applies. And it may be that, uh, I don't know for sure what the select board is gonna do about this. But, uh, I had talked to Don Holgate about a joint get together with them to talk about comprehensive planning and other things. So if there's possible interest in trying to create another kind of surcharge system or something like that, we'd need to. So I, I don't know whether we pursue anything like this, but those are a couple of the things that would come up. I think a third thing Andrew mentioned is, um, it's not altogether clear what modification means or I'm, I'm not sure if that's the term being used here, but that there really would be some benefit in being clear about what that is, um, going forward. So as you think about that, I think those are some of the dimensions that are likely to come up there. So, let's see, any other topics people wanna put on the list?
Um, since we had a home occupancy application, which is, is rare, I gotta get on the kick on it, what Steve said, that's actually very true. Um, I've talked to Andrew and Leslie about this, just picking at their brains here and there about, we get sort of, I don't wanna say blamed, but, you know, we do get blamed for it, even if it's not us technically, removing commercial. Like removing too much commercial, but it's hard to explain to someone the difference between R C two and anything else, really. It's kinda scary, but the, um, Leslie, is there a way that we could, and I don't even think it's for this year. I think it's, this is sort of something that we need to work on is making it a little easier to have, you know, super ultra light commercial on the home occupancy. I mean, everybody does it. Remember when those, when we used to talk about the little white trailers? You know, the little white trailer things are actually new, okay? I call it the DeWalt shop, okay? You don't have a shop anymore like my father had and all the guys.
Yeah, like car repair.
You, you drive your shop to the person's house. I mean, people can build cabinets in a driveway now, I mean, literally, and, and, and it's amazing. So it's changed everything, but you gotta park somewhere, you gotta put the stuff, the twenty foot storage container, the, you know, two of these white trailer things. I'm just using this as an example, cause we had that issue with the storage containers at the Mobway. And a lot of the stuff kinda came up about Mobway. And you're gonna continue to see these little issues with landscapers. It isn't just landscapers, it's these small contractors, they just need like two thousand square feet. And that can happen on someone's property a lot easier than it can, you know, in a commercial area. Like what are they gonna pay for that? It's almost like another source of income for people, you know? Beyond the traditional use of this has been going on forever, but it's, it's really modified now. You can't build a shop anymore, like Bruce Killen, like Bruce Killen shop. You could hear his thickness plan running miles away when you turn on that three phase generator. You know what I'm saying? This is a three phase generator. And, um, you know, the humming sound, I mean, you couldn't get away with that now, you know what I'm saying? Without being legal. So I'm just talking about this as a future thing, because it's gonna, it, it needs to get looked at. I mean, what we approved tonight was nothing, that was like a birthday party compared to what.
Could be.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So, um, you know, we had the, uh, what's the lady's name that did, the, the daycare place move?
Oh, she's, she lives right next door there.
Right, um, whatever her name is, Melanie, right? And that, that's the kinda stuff that, you know, is allowed by law. But we would have to tweak things a little bit to let more commercial, I don't even wanna use the word commercial, just storage more and different uses.
More like expanded home occupation.
That's what I'm talking about, expand in the home occupation to, to today's needs where the burden isn't so bad for.
And it might not be in every district, it might be in certain districts.
It might be in certain parts of the island, exactly. And that's, that's the thing, I've been struggling with that, because we, we're not removing commercial to the level. It's the, it's the way that the commercial businesses have evolved. I mean, there's more activity at one house when somebody's getting their grass cut. Than there is with something they were doing themselves that might be illegal. I'm telling you, I mean, look at what a landscaper brings to a house now. It's amazing how much stuff, and we used to take the lock and just drive around Wisconsin. We didn't even, we just packed the truck and cut the grass and go to different houses without putting it back on the truck. Can't do that anymore, there's too much stuff.
The stuff is too big.
It's crazy, I mean, but I'm just trying to say that we need to look at that.
So what to be.
At some point, Leslie, I mean, maybe for two thousand twenty one, but I'm just saying something, I know it's not something that you've even really looked at too much, but you, it's, it's the same discussion as C tech and Mobway.
Well.
And all the different things that we've done over the last fifteen years.
It's interesting, you say, it makes me think of the wedding gigs in the tents.
Look at those people that were in there for that night. I never saw them before, but I tell you what.
But it's, it's like, it's like pop up shops, only in a, a different kind of commercial thing, right?
That's true, yeah.
It, it might even be too, that it would be, uh, classifications. So home use occupancy would be allowed in all zones it's currently allowed. But certain classifications, like a landscape type of a process or a cabinet maker type versus an architecture group, like it, there may be, it gets refined by classification, I guess is what I'm suggesting.
You always have a noise bylaw, you always have the ability to, to have a complaint. Maybe there's a way to attach some sort of way to, you know, file a complaint, like it's a special permit type.
Right.
Not like that, but you know what I mean? Yeah, so this, this, it's something that we need to look at, because things are not ugly anymore. They're aesthetically good looking, I mean, everybody's got their boat in there. A boat is a lot bigger than those little business trailers, you know what I'm saying? So, anyway, that was, that was my, that's my spiel.
I have a, it keeps coming up to me every time I drive by, a thing that's been completely clear cut for the eventual building of things. I, that, I, you know, it's ridiculous, I know, but, you know, I weed my, yeah, I, exactly. Because I say that kinda thing, you know, I weed my garden and then you've got all these little critters that are looking for a new home.
Yeah.
And the same thing is happening, I think, on a larger scale. On these huge properties, I mean, these days are not like hundred acre properties, but an acre these days or five acres. There's a lot to clear cut stacked on the number of years that we've been doing this. So that you still have a similar population of animals that is still in need of a place to be, but they're shrinking and shrinking areas to be. So I don't know if there is a way that we can adjust that to either have, uh, you know, you know, a twenty five foot native barrier around it so that they can't go property, you know, property line to property line, but that there's a buffer that remains in place. Maybe, uh, just, because once things are built and you get the vegetation back, you know, it's fine. It's just. It's just when everything is, there's nothing, that it puts a lot of pressure on, you know, now I, my yard is feeding.
The deer.
Their deer.
Right.
I mean, you know what I mean, but, which, which is fine, but I, I just, cause I know like behind my property on Appleton, between Appleton and Miz and Mass, there's a twenty-five foot buffer, a conservation buffer, which is not, uh, respected in all, on all properties, but nonetheless, the intent is there. And I just find that that gives a great harbor for many animals. Anyway, I just wanna throw it out there as something to think about, like some way to apron.
Like vegetative buffers for animal protection.
Right, right.
Okay.
Steve, about ten or fifteen years ago, that was on town meeting floor, Leslie and I.
It was before I got here, the excavation by law that didn't pass.
There's a lot of discussion.
It was right around the time I got here.
Right, but I think now we're in a different spot with all the layering of these, like when this sixty units or hundred or whatever, that forty B, that's a huge swath of land that's being proposed to.
One of the things, Campbell, that's happened, oh, and, and anyone that's doing, sort of looking around, you can see this, but the modular houses require more space to set the house. You can't just pull up and block the house on the foundation, you have to have a lot of room. So there's more unnecessary cutting to get everything in position and the, the truck has, it's like a ladder truck times, you know, all the stuff that has to happen.
Well, I've seen that.
But, but you're, but I'm just saying, there's, there's more now because of that, but I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that that's the only reason, I'm just saying that's one of them.
Well, it's one and it's because it can happen, and not, I, and I don't necessarily think that people are just like, yeah, just rip it out. It's just, I don't think that they really think about it and, you know, it's, it's cheaper in the long run to retain twenty feet of native shrubbery, et cetera, than to have to replant it all.
Cause I have no space, yeah, so it, it's tough. The other thing too is the new trees, everybody's planning, and we just heard a guy say, Ty, I planted six feet trees, I was like, wow. I mean, it's not free, but our native trees are ugly compared to the vineyards native trees, I was just over there.
Oh, yeah, well, they have land.
Trees over there, no, I'm talking about the natural trees.
No, no, but they have.
We, ours are kinda like, you know, people wanna get rid of the pine and put in something else. It's, I think it comes with the way things are now, they're more.
All right, but I'm just putting it out there, cause I think we need to be more, um, uh, better stewards of the land that we do have.
Like, like the school?
Can, can I ask?
There's a deal, I'll end up in.
To Steve, uh, if I can, to Stephen, uh, you, you got partway along with the, um, family member provisions last year. Is that something we should be caring for?
Interesting you bring that up, cause I was thinking about it the other day, um, I thi, and, uh, the, I think that there, we could be developing that, I'm not sure that the pressure, so the concept was that we would develop some deed restrictions that would qualify covenant or a secondary lot, covenants for the shy list or secondary lots to qualify for the shy list, because you might be able to develop options. Our housing problem to some extent is with respect to land that can be developed in the areas that would be, I know that word isn't right anymore, but infill, Nat knows.
That was a twenty year ago.
Yeah, the better one that they use now, but the idea was that, uh, to incentivize, incentivize infill with some creative solutions that might bolster our shy list number. And at the same time, answer questions or answer and address issues for, uh, somebody who's aging in place and they're in a two thousand square foot ranch with a garage apartment that can be converted to a tertiary with a first floor living, so that they could come up with solutions that would maybe not fit into the specific, exactly as it is now, secondary lot solution. So that, it was basically to try and come up with options for people, and those options could perhaps result in shy list qualifications. So having said all that, I don't know that the pressure is nearly as much now that we have safe harbor. I'm not suggesting it's not worth pursuing, but with the safe harbor and then on top of safe harbor, the neighborhood first program to extend and perpetuate safe harbor. I'm happy to look at the article and see if, and maybe talk to Leslie or someone.
I think it'd be worth keeping it on the, on the list, because two years goes very fast and, uh, town meeting is, uh, April, and then if you wait till the year after, if it doesn't pass the first time, uh.
I, I'm happy to re, revisit it and the concerns that were brought up and the support that was brought up.
You have to proceed, but I, I just didn't wanna lose the thought.
No, no, I mean, I think it's a good point to bring up, and I, I probably what I would do is I'd try and squeeze in at some point at Leslie's leisure, whether it was, you know, where it might go and when it might go.
You're talking about getting approval with the state or the change to income level?
Yeah, maybe half an hour discussion just to look at it and see what solutions are and what they may or may not.
I, I also.
Sometimes when you don't have the pressure, it's a good time to pursue something.
I just don't wanna lose things that could be on a longer term list. The other one, uh, I spoke to Andrew about, but I don't think I had a chance to talk to others about, um, Anna, um, Pouspa from Housing Nantucket wanted to talk about something Steve Cohen had brought up last year, uh, but in a narrower sense.
The big, the big lot thing.
Right, and particularly thinking about Tom Nevers, uh, as a, a single case, not, not, not everything everywhere, but for certain size lots that you might be able to do two covenant lots.
Or four kitchen alternative on these huge lots in certain areas.
Right, but, but in a, a narrow part of the island to kinda test it out.
Tom Nevers and really up by the airport, and also, you know, that, that whole boulevard area. There's three or four reasons that this should be looked at, I mean, you saw some of the ones tonight, see how big those lots are. I mean, it's kinda scary how big those lots are. There's some like five acre lots out there, five acres, it's kinda believable.
Well, and the, the covenant program is so helpful to, um, islanders and people who don't meet the shy list standards. So, uh, just if we could add something like that.
To modify Steve's article, Leslie, yeah, I mean, we talked about that, we've bounced it around here a couple, I forgot, I'm glad you brought that up. That was something that I thought was really worthy, it also keeps the gentrification potential down. You know what I mean? Because if you can keep it and sell a couple pieces of dirt, you can still keep your dirt. But if you've got this golf course thing that you got nothing that you can't do anything with.
For older people or folks who are sending their kids to college or.
It's a fam, it's a way to create a family compound, there's a whole bunch of tools in the toolbox.
Yep.
As, as, uh, Stevie used to say that once in a while, tools in the toolbox, it, it, it's good. There's a lot of local families that own these big lots.
So let's move to swimming pools, Fritz, uh, we, I, I wanna, um, say, I think maybe Catherine, could you double check this and, or, uh, Leslie? Andrew said, I think when John and I met with him, that we tried to have our quarterly meeting, that's a discussion meeting, September twenty-third. I think that's a date he suggested, so we'll be able to come back to certain things about the master plan and about certain of these articles, and because the swimming pool issue is complicated, um, that may be one of them that's right. But Fritz, I appreciate your doing all the work to lay this all out, and thought maybe you'd wanna start us down the path here to sort of your current thinking.
Well, um, Andrew and I spoke about R one specifically, and I think he thought that that was worth looking at and talking to people in the R one districts and kinda set, go back and reset in terms of, um, where, where we might, what might be reasonable and what might be acceptable to a lot of people. The other thing that's in, uh, the package I noticed was something that I had given, uh, Andrew, and, uh, it was basically following up on the comment that the select board had made on that swimming pool article about having the town, various town departments study what might be done. And I then just added to it a whole bunch of list of questions that one might, I mean, that various groups might ask about swimming pools, you know, is, you know, should we be doing this, should we be doing this? What is their science that verifies anything? And there are a few of those that relate to zoning. So I told Andrew, I didn't wanna come back to it, it's really not from me, but really just us looking at some issues and collectively deciding whether there are anything that's worth pursuing or not.
I, I wondered too, uh, because the health department may have a role to play here, that when we get into more in-depth discussion of some of this, maybe somebody from the board of health or the health director or something might be part of the discussion too.
Yeah, and I, I followed, I mean, those are some of the questions, and those were some of the departments that the board, the select board said really ought to be reviewing things. And, um, I have, uh, I've spoken to the heads of some of those departments. And the only thing that I know that's going on is, um, the DPW is going forward with a proposal with respect to restrictions about emptying swimming pools in the storm drains. And, but I'm not sure, uh, some of the departments felt that I think DPW is gonna be doing a more comprehensive type of thing and they're not, so I think it's appropriate to, suggesting maybe they ought to be going back again.
I, I think one of the things, I mean, I'd like to add a couple of things to your, your pool thing. I have probably two concerns, one, um, probably people don't think about a lot, but pools leak, right? They spring leaks, and very often they have removed, like we saw in that last pool on here, the equipment, the pumping equipment is a considerable distance from the pool itself. And most of your leaks are gonna happen through winter freezing, breakage, something like that. Somebody sticking something in the yard and going through a pipe or whatever. So I, to a degree, I'd like to see them a little bit closer, so that, uh, the leaking can be controlled. And then, um, I had thought to go along with this, uh, just because to compensate for a leak, the maintenance person just increases the flow of water, right, into the pool, so that the homeowner may never know that there's a leak until it becomes a big leak and they have a big charge on their, their water bill if they're using town water for it. So it made me think about, um, trying to meter approximately how much what, you know, cause you've got an evaporation rate that's going to be occurring on a heated pool, whether it's in this September or July. Just throwing it out there about metering, uh, pool water, you know, there, if you have a twenty, eighteen thousand gallon pool, on average, you should be going through about this much water. And just as something to, you know, so that if there is a sizable leak, the homeowner does become aware of it, because it isn't always in the installer who becomes the maintenance person in their best interest to say, oh, I may have something and now we have a leak. So that was one thought, and, uh, so the other one is on these permits. Because I don't think everybody that buys a home here wants a pool with it, but they're gonna get one anyway. Because builders are, um, in their spec houses or in their homes that haven't been purchased, that are going to be for sale, they're putting in pools, and pools are not inexpensive to run, and not everybody wants one. So I was thinking something along the lines of, um, you know, approving pools, right? Like where you get your permit and everything, and once the house is, is sold, if someone wants to carry forward with that, then, you know, the permit and everything is in place and, you know, they can just have the pool in. But then I thought, felt like it would give, one, people options, and two, somehow I feel like pools become like greenhouses, you know? They're a really good idea and everybody wants one until they actually have to, you know, do the put out for taking care of them and all this other stuff, and then they're like, man, that was the biggest headache, I don't know why I do that, but, so those are just a couple of thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's a pretty good list. So, uh, ready to move on to the update on national grid? Uh, I know Nat and, uh, John were there, and maybe some others were too at the last select board meeting, do you wanna give a report? John or Nat or?
I don't know, I wanna give a report.
I think we already know.
Yeah, we already know.
We voiced concerns, so let's just say that, and I don't know if there's much to go on other than looking into an alternative route.
We've got Andrew's maps, everybody.
All right.
Uh, so what I was gonna raise with you is whether you'd like to recommend that the select board consider this alternative route and to write them a letter asking them to do that. Uh, I had a chance to drive it, the route with Andrew, it seems to me to be a better route. Nat, I think you get to drive it too, what do you think?
I drove it twice, I drove it with, with talking to Andrew on the phone, driving really slow. And, and then I drove it with Jason Bridges, took him in my car. And, uh, I never looked at Atlantic Avenue with a pair of eyes like I did the day I did this. I've driven on it a bazillion times, I never noticed the poles in that little two foot, little grass, sort of nothing spot. But I have noticed the curving on the other side of the road being pushed out by the trees that we love to talk about on the Nantucket. And that road is just like South Beach, it needs to widen about a foot and a half, doesn't have to widen much, just a little. And in order to do that, those poles would have to either go away to pick up that extra foot. Well, this could make all that happen and the improvement in the sidewalk on the other side of the road. I mean, it's pretty bad, you look at the curb, and it's kinda scary how bad it is.
You grind your bike down there, you're like, no, blow it down.
And that's, you know, uh, walking for kids and, you know, I don't like to bring all that up, but it, it, it's a walk-in area there. And that's gonna continue to get improved along Atlantic Ave, by the way, as far as the houses and stuff, so. And then the part about, um, I mean, the sneaking up Waymouth and jiggling over to Silver, which any local knows, that sneaky little thing. It's easy, there's barely any electricity there. The houses are mostly seasonal now, you could shut those streets down, it wouldn't affect anybody compared to some other areas. The town owns the land at the, at the, um, corner of the parking lot at Silver and, and Pleasant where the transfer would have to go. So that's covered. And then the Spox Ave pot is huge, there's so much space, there's nothing in the road, on the right side, on the, on the cemetery side. And there's already a lot of money in different stuff, I don't know every little detail, but I know there's a plan for, is it from Nantucket Auto Body to the Rotary, or is it from the Roundabout to the Rotary that we approved at town meeting? To get rid of the poles there and put it all on the ground. There's a whole bunch of different components and moving pots to make Spox Ave better already, so this would just sort of.
Any idea would be to put it underground or under a sidewalk?
It could be, the pole, there's enough room to leave the poles on Spox. Those are definite underground.
Atlantic, I think, would be nice if it were underground, because it's.
Well, that, he wasn't thinking about the stuff that I mentioned until I drove the route, he drove this before that day. But it's, it's pretty, it's simple looking to look at it.
And it's not that long, you know, Atlantic Ave is not a really long stretch of road.
Um, engineered plans, cause a lot of company just did, dug that all up.
Right.
And put water in it, and that was it. And put water in and that was it. So, there should be some, some fresh engineering, you know, work there.
For which area, Nat?
Atlantic got dug up for water with Pleasant, I mean, with Prospect.
So, Atlantic has, I'm just to mention, so at Annual Town Meeting 18, we approved sewer main replacement funding for Silver Street and Atlantic Avenue and then Sparks. But I'm pretty sure it was the lower portion and that the Sparks Ave was more study work for the rehab on Lower by the Rotary to coincide with the sidewalk.
Something else too, there's another, something. There's sidewalk improvement and the lower pot, you're right about that.
So, the Silver Street and the Atlantic have, I mean, the mon- numbers may have changed, but there's approvals for sewer main replacement.
They just dug it up.
Yeah.
See what I mean?
Well, that's why they haven't repaved. Because when I was inquiring about why that road continues to be in such poor shape, it was because they haven't finished with the work that they're going to do.
Now, we're going to dig it off again.
So, perfect time to lay something else.
No, so just leave it, but-
Well, it seems as though this could, part of the existing engineering, from what Andrew said, that National Grid did, could still be used. And this would-
No, they, well, he's talking about the pot from Candle Street through the town lot, out by Diane Cooney's house and sort of down and up. The other, the other option was Mulberry, but instead of Waymouth, but now it's Mulberry.
So, just on destroying, it doesn't really let you see so much how it connects back Candle Street, I guess. But that part, at least they don't have to redo it. And the fact that better than half of this is underground and that there's reasonable sites for their equipment and all seems like a pretty good proposal.
In the town on Land Pot, can't underestimate how important that is for these transferable locations. It's a big deal. We have to remember, we own all the land in Sparks, I mean, almost, you know what I mean? So, there's a lot of like sort of options there. That baseball field's likely going to be moving. That's where the new middle school's going to be when that all sort of eventually happens. So, there's going to be a lot of activity there, so changing. So, there'll be plenty of space for that.
So, if you all think that this is a good way to go, I had contacted Don Holgate to see if she could drive the route with Andrew. And when she was available, he wasn't and I wasn't, and she's tied up this week. So, we're going to try for early next week. And I think John, maybe both of us go, or John may go instead of me so that she sees it. So, I think if we can get, start a process that other people could drive the route to, that probably, I don't want to take all Andrew's time to do that. But I think that being able to eyeball it really helps you see what the possibilities are. So, it's not just hypothetical.
The other piece to this, dude, is the stuff that's in the air on Waymouth. And so, it's like nothing to, is compared to the other route. I mean, it's like nothing.
The other route is just adding these huge weights to these poles and already-
It's also right on the harbor and-
So, I'm just, and there's also, and I can't explain the details, but I've talked to people that understand this more than certainly I do. It allows for Washington Street, you know, the regular pot to eventually disappear a lot easier in future. Because Washington Street's going to be improved once the land bank gets, everything happens that's going to happen. It's going to be more bike friendly, it's going to be more pedestrian friendly. It just takes us forever to do this. So, that's going to also help that eventually. So, that's a good thing too.
Nat, the circles in the roof.
I think those are transferable locations, I think.
And I only ask that because I don't see in their original design with the red, where are they putting those same transformers?
They were going to be on the poles, I think.
I think so.
Hanging up high somewhere, right, Polly?
Yeah, because this, that's the revised, that's not the original.
They talked about, about these big, huge things that go on the poles.
Provision for transformers. But the red line is their second iteration for only above ground.
Like bigger poles, above, forty-five feet tall.
Right, and so I had a question to that because I know that the last meeting, they were saying that, you know, by right, we didn't even have to come here and we could have done whatever we wanted to. And so, my question to that is-
The town is contesting that.
Right, but if what they were doing to upgrade was increasing or, or-
Reducing accessibility.
Reducing the, the safety and accessibility of a-
Holly is smiling and nodding.
The town that, it would seem like you wouldn't be able to just do that by right. You look at what happened on Gardner Street there. And I mean, you've lost almost six inches. Now, that's a whole mirror, right? And now you've, you've forced more people on the sidewalk driving because that one pole that's got the two beams on it with the bolts sticking out. I mean, people, and as it is, they don't get it that, you know, missed by an inch, missed by a mile. They don't get that. They're like, think they need a mile.
That was the worst street for that to happen on.
Yeah, and, and here's, here's something, and Leslie's going to kill me if we keep talking. But I'm stabbing myself. But here, here's something that, and we, I don't have the details, but this is part of this, is this airspace zoning or airspace layout or something? Yes, there's something to do with the-
You'd have to condemn it.
Something about airspace within a certain-
Yeah, you get, you get it.
Some of this. So, when I asked the question to all those guys that were sitting over there in suits, why are some poles out of the sidewalk in the same layout of the same street and others aren't? Why, why can't we just move them? Like I, drives me nuts. It seems so simple to me. Because they weren't there before, they can't be there now. If they were there back in the day, it would still be there.
It's like they have to get a right of way for the poles.
It's that and something to do with this weird airspace.
Yes, it's, it's a trespass.
It's some weird thing that I don't understand. And that's also one of the reasons that the poles are tilted in, something to do with that. Don't understand it.
They'd have to pay for taking it.
But it's gobbledygook stuff that causes all this. So, you know, I don't know. I know one thing, the people will write a check for this if this can happen. So, for this, it, it, you know, some kind of revised plan.
Just so I understand, where, where did this plan come from?
Andrew.
Andrew came up with it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It came up off of one of the original plans that, that Dave and, and Remain worked on to get through to it, but it was a different route after a certain point. And he, I don't know how he figured out the Waymouth-Silver thing. Maybe he takes that shortcut like I do all the time. I don't know, it's a little cat. But it, it, it is a slick little route. And I looked at the poles and they're like those little tiny poles. And I'm like, this is, this is, this is perfect. Because nobody, those houses, there's only, Melissa Philbrick lives on Silver Street, but there's not that many year-rounders anymore on Waymouth and Silver. I'm not saying that negatively or anything. I'm just saying it's true, you know what I mean?
The only thing I'd suggest to add to that is, I think that's where meeting with the select board in a joint fashion, however formal or informal, whoever it is. The, the idea of the LA being underground and everything going underground gets lost in the group conversation as at that meeting.
Can't say it like that.
It can easily, intentionally or unintentionally, it can easily get confused. And I think to be focused on that as one point, like a laser focus, is that this is really an initiative, not just to do the LA, but to get underground everything.
You have to remember, this is an alternative to the crazy Pleasant Street idea. I mean, which is never going to work in a million years.
Or the, the big dig tunneling idea for fifty million dollars.
Then they can make concrete, I would assume, some kind of vault things that are smaller. I mean, this fourteen foot wide thing that the guy said, this is all they, I don't know about that. Got to be something smaller than that they can have made for the smaller streets, you know, especially if there's less wires.
Well, it's so hard to know what to believe because you don't feel like you're really getting it.
We need to go visit Quincy because ever, remember the whole Quincy conversation? That's what, I'm still thinking about that, like, okay, so what are they doing there different? They just pay to have it done? And it's going to be another, outside contractor's going to do it. The key thing is coordinating the other work to happen at the same time. And I think these streets, and that was one of the reasons that Andrew did this, is these streets wouldn't, it wouldn't bother anyone if they were left open.
Right.
The, I mean, the trenching and the, you know.
Right, for a while.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, the thing will kill it though, is that if it's a requirement that they have to be ten feet down. Because that's where I think that forty, fourteen foot box came in, was that they, they can't do it. So, if we, if we as a town can give on that.
I don't think it has to happen.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I think that was related to-
It has something to do with sewer and water.
Nobody else does that.
Initially, I know.
And it was-
And then say, but we can't do it.
Unhappiness with-
It's the time, they need to get it.
Having to deal, integrate National Grid when all the rest of the wires and the town utilities and everything is all snaked up together. So, could I ask, could I ask for, could I ask for a motion that you authorize me to write a letter to the select board and recommend that they consider closely this part, this, this sketch plan and consider taking a drive with Andrew or his deputies?
I'll make a motion. I'll make that motion.
Posse?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, is there further business? I think we have another A and R meeting for those on this side of the room that is before September. So, it'd be the Thursday before September ninth, whatever that is, at noon at Two Fairgrounds. It was only half an hour meeting and we had some discussion. It went very smoothly. So, um-
September fifth. September fifth, for anyone taking notes.
Thank you.
And then what was the other date, the 23rd?
And the 23rd is, is a quarterly meeting that's a discussion meeting with us. And we'll, if, if anybody has items they want to suggest about that, we'll have a chance to touch on that September ninth. But I just wanted to give you advanced awareness that I think a lot of it should be about how we're going to roll forward with the master plan work and then possibly picking up on some more of these ATM matters. And the other thing I asked Andrew to put on that agenda was we've been getting, thanks to Leslie and Friends, data about what's actually happening on the ground in the enforcement report that we received, what was that, three, two weeks ago? Because they wanted us to be able to have a conversation about anything raised by that data. And I also want it to be in the public record with Agenda so everybody who's interested could see it. And maybe by then, we'll have the public records response to the request about National Grid. They asked for one extension. I think their time is coming nigh. So, a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.